Ready? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful City of Cape Canaveral City Hall. It is six o'clock P. M., March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. We are one hundred Polk Avenue, and this is our regular March fifteenth city council meeting. At this time, I call this meeting to order, and I would like to ask our mayor pro temp to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undebatable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, and this council. Thank you for being here tonight and staff to get ready for this meeting at this time. City clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
Here.
Mayor Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right. Good deal. This time we are at the public participation portion of our meeting. I have some comment cards here. If if you wanted to speak about anything in general, that's the time. If you checked a box on one of the particular items, we will wait. And so if you're wondering why I didn't call your name, it looks like one out of the four comments did check one of the items. So I'm going to hold on that one unless you insist. You are more than welcome to get it out of the way, but I do recommend waiting to that time. For those of you who are speaking, just as a matter of housekeeping, this little three light buzzer here, you'll have three minutes to speak. It'll be green when you're you're speaking. At about thirty seconds, it will go yellow. We ask that you please try to keep it within the the three minutes and wrap it up. And then when time's up, it will go red, and I will stop you. And if this council desires to have more time, we'll we'll certainly ask. And so with that, thank you all for being here tonight. We'll begin our public participation. The first one on here that I have is, my reading's correct, Ms. Peggy Eimer on the A one A roundabout. Yes, and when you come up, I left this out. Thank you. Please state your name and address, and our city clerk will be able to take that down. Thank you.
Peggy Eimer, two thirty-eight Seaport Boulevard in Cape Canaveral. And we had watched the previous webinar on the A one A roundabout, and we had looked at all of the plans and studied it all, and I think this is a major mistake. We go through that intersection probably five times a day, and if it goes to a roundabout, we believe that bikers and walkers will never be able to get through that intersection as a roundabout. The only way they can get through now is with the lights because they have the ability to have a walking light that they have the ability to go through. With pushing a button, people do not stop. I watch it on North Atlantic Avenue every day. They don't stop when walkers push the button. I think this roundabout is a total mistake, and I beg the board not to approve this and to really consider another way of handling this intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eimer. I have Mr. Bill Hodge. I'm open to that, yes. If you if you would want to wait. Okay, you got it. Thank you. It's Mr. Bob Hathaway. Okay. And that concludes the public comments. Just to make sure anyone didn't turn in a card that I did not get, seeing none, we will move on to the presentations and interviews portion of our meeting. We have a presentation by the Florida Department of Transportation, also known as FDOT, regarding state road A one A improvements. That, thank you for being here.
All right, so before I get started, we do have some other DOT members in the room with us, so I just wanted to acknowledge them. We have Jeff Cicero is our district design engineer. We have Jared Perdue, our district secretary. We have Ed Kestery, our district CPM, so consultant project management engineer. We have Anna Taylor, our government liaison, and we have Zach Zalneritis, which is representing our traffic operations group. So we brought the A team so we can answer any questions you have. Thank you again really for this opportunity to present an update on the state road A one A projects. We got a chance to meet with each one of the council members and the mayor last month, and we really did appreciate your time and input in those meetings. It was very helpful to hear some of the questions and concerns that you had about the projects, and we hope and believe that today's presentation will help address some of those concerns. My name is Lori Trebbitts, and I'm the project manager on four three oh two oh two dash eight, the roadway redesign or curb and gutter project from North Atlantic to George King Boulevard.
Good afternoon or evening. My name's Anthony Miller, and I'm the project manager for four three zero two zero two dash five, which is the intersection redesign of State Road A one A at North Atlantic Avenue.
So first, we'll go through a recap of how these two projects came about. Then we'd like to take a step back and understand how we can support the city's needs and vision for the projects. We'll give a quick update on the feedback we've received so far, including input from the October twenty twenty-one public meeting. Then we'll share what the next steps are for the projects and some opportunities for the community to get involved and provide more input. So how did these projects come about? These two projects came from a need and desire identified by the city and brought to FDOT. This need is focused on improving the multimodal safety and mobility of A one A. The city's needs are highlighted in two community documents. The first is the twenty eighteen Community Survey Report, which included over a thousand responses from residents. The survey revealed that eighty-two percent of residents find it very important to be able to safely and easily bike or walk along A one A, but only twenty-one percent are currently satisfied with the conditions. The survey also revealed that eighty-eight percent of residents feel that walking and biking across A one A is very important to them, but only twenty-two percent are currently satisfied with the conditions of A one A. So the current, clearly, there is an opportunity for us to improve the conditions along A one A in the hopes that we can increase safety and satisfaction. In twenty nineteen, the city council adopted a resolution to further emphasize this critical safety need on A one A. And I think this quote best summarizes what's entailed in that document. The city council continues to strongly emphasize, as a matter of local policy, that bicycle, multimodal, and pedestrian safety and connectivity through the state road A one A corridor be given more consideration and emphasis to address the public safety needs of all people required to use state road A one A for transportation and connectivity. So six key principles were identified from the resolution and were reinforced through the meetings that we've had so far with the council members, city residents, our small group meetings we held with HOAs, and public meeting in October. They are slower roadway speeds, better pedestrian and bicycle facilities, increased safe crossing opportunities, organized vehicular access to destinations, aesthetic and place making improvements, all while minimizing right away impacts. So of all these principles, the first one, managing speeds, is the most important and is actually the precursor of being able to accomplish all of the other principles. As the roadway speed is slowed down, more opportunities to use all of the tools in our toolbox open up. These speed management tools help address the resolution that you guys would like to see for your city. Since safety is the main theme for these projects, this is a quick overview of the quarter's crash history. We pulled data from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-one, and in that time, there have been a total of two hundred and twenty crashes. Angle and head-on crashes make up one in four of those crashes, and those are our most severe crashes that we experienced. Eight percent of the crashes involve our vulnerable users, our bicyclists and peds, and these are the crashes with the highest risk of the person involved in that crash not being able to walk away from that crash. These bike pit crashes resulted in two fatalities and six incapacitating injuries. Although it is only eight percent, both of the fatalities were a result of bike pit crashes, and more than half of the incapacitating injuries were a result of bike pit crashes. As we mentioned, much of the safety risk stems from the roadway conditions and particularly the speeds that occur along this corridor. Speeding occurs because drivers read the cue of the roadway. Sorry, and the roadway's current design as it is today will not support slower speeds. Most people are driving between the current posted forty-five miles an hour and fifty miles an hour and sometimes faster because that is what the current conditions support. This roadway is very straight and very flat, and there are no elements that would encourage drivers to drive at your desired thirty-five miles per hour. So why do vehicle speeds have so much impact on roadway fatality and injuries? It's simple physics. Force or impact equals mass times acceleration. That just means the higher the speeds, the greater the impact. Higher speeds is one of the largest contributors to bicyclists and pedestrian injuries and deaths on our roadways. A pedestrian hit by a vehicle going forty miles per hour has an eighty-five percent chance of fatality or serious injury. At thirty miles per hour, you cut that percentage by almost half. And at twenty miles per hour, the typical speed through the circulating lanes of a roundabout, that pedestrian has a ninety-five percent chance of surviving. Now, speed also influences the amount of information a driver pays attention to in and around the roadway. When traveling at faster speeds, a driver can only focus on things that are much further away with a smaller cone of vision. At fifteen to twenty miles an hour, a driver can better pay attention to potential conflicts along the side of the road, such as people biking and walking. So there are three roadway design strategies that can help influence driver behavior and vehicle vehicular speeds. These three strategies need to be used together to really be successful and make big change. The first is creating a sense of enclosure. Adding medians and street trees is a good example of this. That's why on urban downtown streets where buildings frame the roadway, people intuitively drive slower without needing a speed limit sign to tell them to do so. The next is increasing engagement along the roadway. Speed feedback signs, special emphasis striping, and mid-block crossings are a good example of this. They allow for activities along the roadway and the sidewalk that encourage drivers to drive at appropriate speeds and to pay more attention. The last is incorporating deflection or designing the roadway to make it less straight and flat. This can be done by adding horizontal deflection, like through the roundabouts or curvature, or vertical deflection through raised crosswalks. So now, considering those six principles we got from the city resolution, as well as a focus on speed management along A one A, how can we support the city of Cape Canaveral's vision and needs? We have two opportunities today to support the city's future vision for these projects. The first is the redesign of the intersection of State Road A one A and North Atlantic. The second is the redesign of the roadway from North Atlantic to George King Boulevard. These two projects must work together. How we improve the intersection will determine how we can improve the entire corridor. So here's just an overview of the existing conditions between these two projects. At the south end of these projects, we have two closely spaced three-leg intersections, and we recognize the desire to make this safe and easy to navigate for all users. This means realigning International Drive to tie into North Atlantic. And the current typical through the one-mile stretch of roadway is two lanes in each direction, a ten-foot two-way left turn lane, flush shoulder, no curb and gutter, and five-foot sidewalks at the right-of-way lines. So there are currently two alternatives for these projects. Alternative one would be to maintain a signalized intersection at North Atlantic and tie International Drive to create a single four-leg intersection. We are presenting this alternative in response to the mayor's request to reexamine a signalized intersection at this location following the public meeting. Since leaving a signal as it is today will not slow people down and therefore limits the opportunities for speed management along this tight corridor, the roadway redesign project would be set at forty miles per hour. We would still install the curb and gutter, which means introducing a profile along the road to address some of the flooding concerns. We would still pull the bikes off of the road and onto a five-foot cycle track adjacent to a five-foot sidewalk. Mid-block crossings with refuge islands and pedestrian hybrid beacons would be installed, but there would not be raised crosswalks. The roadway design speed is directly tied to the ability to influence the road through those speed management techniques I discussed earlier. At forty miles an hour, you are not able to add raised medians or any significant landscaping that could help create that enclosure feeling without having significant right-of-way impacts. We won't have the same opportunities to create those gateway features coming into the city, and the forty miles per hour would not meet the city's resolution goals of significant safety improvements along this roadway. And then it's worth noting that this alternative will have slight right-of-way impacts. The second alternative is to redesign North Atlantic and International as a modern roundabout. The roundabout will function as a gateway, but most importantly, it provides the horizontal deflection or curvature to manage speeds down to thirty miles per hour. The roadway will have curb and gutter and a closed range system, a cycle track, a sidewalk. We will be able to place landscaping and treat trees, street trees along the roadside, again, creating that sense of enclosure. The raised median in the middle will also be able to have substantial landscaping. The roundabout median and roadside buffer will also have space for place making and wayfinding, both elements that support the city's vision of a walkable A one A. And as with alternative one, we will be recommending mid-block crossings, which include refuge islands and hybrid beacons. However, this option will allow for raised crosswalks. This option will also have slight right-of-way impacts. So here's a visual of what the mid-block crossings may look like between the two alternatives. This example is shown at Thurm Boulevard, but we are still recommending three mid-block crossings within the project limits. To address someone's concern earlier about the roundabout, we are actually recommending a mid-block crossing just north and just south. So we will have alternative routes. If a pedestrian did not feel comfortable through the roundabout, Anthony's going to talk about the roundabout in a little bit. With alternative one at forty miles per hour, we will have the pedestrian hybrid beacons that go to a full red stop for the vehicles, but we won't be able to include the raised crosswalks and only add minimal landscaping in the intermediate medians that are to provide refuge for the pedestrians while using the mid-block. With alternative two, you can definitely see and feel a difference in the roadway. We have raised crosswalks, which will help slow the drivers down as well as put the pedestrians in a better line of sight with the drivers. We also have a lot more opportunities for landscaping within the median and the roadside buffer. These images are to show the difference in organized access points, and this is really telling of the difference in character of the roadway between our two alternatives. With alternative one, you basically get the same road you have today with a five-lane section. There will be intermittent medians at mid-block crossing locations, but for the majority of the corridor, it will be straight and it will be wide open. With alternative two, it looks like a completely different road. We have a continuous median with designated access points and a lot more opportunities for substantial landscaping due to the slower speeds.
Okay. Those earlier points cover the comparison between the alternatives focusing on the roadway design. We also want to share a few points as we compare the two intersection configurations, a modern roundabout and a signal. The first related, first related to how traffic would operate. Analysis show that based on projected traffic, the roundabout will perform better than the signal from opening year to twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty thirty. This occurs during any time of day, including the most congested times of the day. This roundabout will have two times less delay in the morning peak hour and one point six times less delay in the afternoon peak hour in twenty thirty. This runabout will also respond better to real-time traffic conditions, unexpected events, and power outages from storms. From a maintenance perspective over the life cycle, modern roundabouts will have about twenty-five percent less maintenance costs due to no electrical power for a signal, no signal cabinet maintenance, and no retiming needs. Typically, signals need to be retimed every three to five years, which is additional cost. Right, and the biggest benefit of modern roundabouts is its safety benefit for all modes of travel. Modern roundabouts result in ninety percent less deaths and seventy-five percent less injury crashes compared to a signal. This is because roundabouts naturally slow vehicles down through the design of the path of the roadway curvature. Drivers do not have a choice but to slow vehicles down to approximately twenty miles an hour in order to maneuver through the roundabout. Also, drivers only have to look one direction when navigating the roundabout. Both speeds emerging movements result in less severe crashes, typically only fender tenders, and not crashes that result in death and severe injuries. Signals do not slow vehicles down. There's an existing signal there now at this intersection, and from what we saw from the speed study, that eighty-five percent of drivers are driving at or below fifty miles per hour. We also looked into the different, the difference between keep and the signal and the roundabouts impact of right-of-way on adjacent properties. The roundabout alternative will require more right-of-way to construct, as you can see from the graphic in blue. The green shade would be to realign International Drive up to the signal only. With either alternative, no homes would be impacted or relocations necessary. Business impacts would be limited to approximately a dozen parking spaces removed and access changes for the bank on the southwest corner of the intersection. Lastly, modern roundabouts offer an opportunity to create a gateway or place making element. For the city of Cape Canaveral, this could be a gateway to welcome residents and visitors and to reinforce the city's identity or branding of its main street. The areas around the roundabout can also be opportunities for community small parks or additional green spaces, further reinforcing the sense of the area. These parks and green spaces can also help the city desire for green infrastructure and sustainability through stormwater retention. Here's an example of public art that can potentially be included in the roundabout itself. Now, this is a interpretation of the city's seal and identity of sun, space, and sea. These words are etched into the circular sculpture with four ships. There could potentially be add a fourth word and ship of stars to acknowledge the city's history and future vision. It's meant to represent cruise ships coming in and out of the port. These ships could be carved out of limestone boulders. The glass pieces represent the ship's exhaust towers, which can light up to represent different seasons and events. Need of vegetation and landscaping could be incorporated into the feature as well. All this could reconnect the city's residents and visitors to the sense of space, sense of place of the city of Cape Canaveral. So we've gotten questions about whether what other places currently have roundabouts. Here's a chart of all the roundabouts in the state. In fact, Florida has the greatest number of roundabouts in the country at five hundred and sixteen. The villages with a large population of older residents has the most roundabouts. Along the bright side are some examples that are similar in scale and operational characteristics to the one proposed today. These include recently built ones from Manatee County at State Road forty-six, or State Road sixty-four in Greyhawk. In Sarasota, there are multiple ones along U. S. Forty-one and in Delano on U. S. Seventy ninety-two.
So this graphic shows how the two alternatives would compare to one another. Alternative one is the signalized intersection with a forty mile per hour roadway, and alternative two is the modern roundabout at thirty miles per hour. Categories were broken out again based on the city's vision and guiding principles for speed management. Alternative one fully addresses two principles, better pedestrian and bicycling facilities and minimizing right-of-way impacts. It will somewhat address an additional two with increased safe crossing opportunities within the blocks and aesthetic place making improvements with some minimal low-profile landscaping. It will not achieve the slow speeds desired by the city or the ability to organize access points along the corridor. Alternative two will fully address all of these principles. The next slide is going to show a fly-through of what alternative two would look like. For the sake of time for tonight's presentation, we did cut the full video down a little bit just to show the key elements on the project, but the full video can be found at cflroads.com if anyone is interested. So we start off with this kind of nice gentle curvature coming off of five twenty-eight, allowing for that space to create a gateway feature. Now, that geometry coming in along with the roundabout at the end of the project limits really allows us to book in the projects so that we can maintain those slower speeds throughout. And as you come in, you see the curb and gutter, all this beautiful landscaping in the median on the outside, very different road than what we see today. And this is just to show you what Central Boulevard would look like with our designated pedestrian and bicycle routes on each leg of the intersection. You'll see this truck make a right-hand turn in a minute on what appears to be the curb, but that is a truck apron. That is an intentional design to keep the geometry of the intersection tight while still allowing the large vehicles to make their right-hand turns. So we'll keep driving southbound. We're going to come up to one of the mid-block crossing opportunities. The pedestrian is going to hit that button. It will flash to alert the drivers to then come to a full and complete stop. Give them plenty of time to safely cross A one A. You'll see they're on that raised crosswalk that I mentioned, so it again raises the pedestrian up so they're in a better line of sight of the drivers and also slows the vehicles down as they drive over the vertical crosswalk. And now we'll skip ahead to the roundabout.
So here's a view of the proposed roundabout with the gateway art that can potentially be included in the center. This is just one of the possible features that that could be included with this project. And as Lori mentioned, you can see the full video showing how the roundabout operates on cflroads.com. And the next view is going to be at eye level, approaching the roundabout and driving through it. And from this video, you can see the city's seal, sun, space, and sea and the ships in the center of the roundabout.
So you might be asking yourself, but why? So you might be asking yourself, but why can't we build the signal and still address our resolution? An additional alternative was developed to see what the impacts would be if we met as many of the city's goals. While still adhering to design criteria, but with a signalized intersection instead of the modern roundabout. Without the modern roundabout, we cannot slow the speeds down through the roadway. Higher speeds influence our standards that require a wider median width. Which causes there to be significant right of way impacts. So basically, the higher the speeds, the larger that typical has to get. The smaller the speeds, the tighter we can make the typical. So this one with a 22 foot minimum required median width. We went from our 100 foot existing right of way that we were able to achieve alternative one and two N. With 114 required feet of right of way. This would impact approximately 41 properties along the roadway. Eight of these properties would have significant parking impacts. Just some of the businesses that would be affected include the Radisson Resort at the port. The Columbia Commercial Complex and the Plaza at 8660 Astronaut Boulevard. We estimate these right of way impacts to be approximately $30 million just in right of way. So due to significant right of way costs and property impacts, this alternative would not be moving forward for consideration.
Okay. So we've been discussing these projects for a while now and we've heard much from the community, but what is some of the feedback? In October last year, we had a public open house where we shared the initial concepts of the roadway. And the intersection design that would address the city resolution goals. Uh, the meeting was very well attended. We had over 400 people show up in person. And we want to thank everyone who participated and shared your thoughts from the meeting we heard. Support for slowing vehicle speeds down and place making. In addition to separating bike lanes, raised medians, landscaping, gateway features. And additional pedestrian crossing opportunities. And we also heard concerns about the modern roundabout and access management. We are continuing to refine the design of both the intersection and roadway and incorporating the feedback we received. The ideas we shared earlier already incorporated your initial feedback from the open house. But our work is not done. So what are the next steps? Transportation project development is a lengthy process. This project started in 2017 when we had initial discussions with the city, the county and the Space Coast TPO. We have and will continue to partner very closely with the city and TPO. And we want to thank the mayor, the council members and the city manager for all your support. We heard from the community, community through the public meeting, but also in many small group meetings during the summer and fall of 2021. We had the public meeting in October. Then in January and February, met with the mayor and city council members individually to gather additional input. We will continue to dialogue with the community and hear your thoughts as we advance these projects into design and construction. These two projects still have a few more years to go through the project development process before construction ends. Please let us know if your organization or neighborhood would be interested in meeting with us. We'd love to come and meet with you to hear your feedback for more, for us to share more details on the projects. Note that although the intersection project is funded for construction, the roadway project is currently only funded for design. Again, we like to thank the council for inviting the FDOT to present on these two important projects that work with the city's vision. Lori, my contact information is up on the screen and we invite anyone to reach out to us with any questions, comments, or. We'd like to meet and discuss these projects. Uh, we thank you for your time.
Thank you very much Anthony and Lori and Secretary Purdue. You are, there you are. I, um, I want to thank you for taking the time and bringing the team together to put that presentation together. I know that this has been, um, an emotional issue in the city for sure, but you've shown. Great enthusiasm to make it a two-way conversation. And that's all for, for me, I can ask for is to know that. The myth that FDOT is going to come into the city of Cape Canaveral. And you know, drive something down that the community doesn't want is not the intent that I see from you. I think that there's a strong desire that, um, we want community enthusiasm and buy-in. And, uh, that presentation is. What it shows that other alternative for the community. And I thought that was the most salient, um. Objection that I heard is, but what about the other alternative? And so for those of you who got a chance to see that tonight, that was actually the first time we had seen in, in that depth, this council, I think. We did meet and we addressed some of these issues, but at this time, I'd like to, um, I know we got a full meeting ahead of us. Um, just lay out that the goal is as we saw from Anthony and the next steps. Is to continue to roll up the sleeves and, and keep the conversation going. But the thing that Secretary Purdue said in, in the meeting is, when I, when I approached him, I said. There is a lot of pushback on a roundabout in our community. Um, I was just coming off of a campaign, so I by force was knocking on a lot of doors. And everything I wanted to talk about was second to the roundabout. Um, so. This is, this led to a series of meetings with the whole council today where this presentation to show that other alternative. But what Secretary Purdue said is if citizens are saying no, at least tell us why. Cause that gives them a fair chance to work off of it. And so my request to the community is that before we just say no, it's a bad idea, which you are free to say. Ask yourself the reasons why you're saying no and help communicate that to FDOT because that's going to, I think. Help all of us advocate for the right decision. I don't think anyone in here wants to make a wrong decision. Um, on this and with good communication, I know we can get there. So again, thank you very much. Um, council, if we want to just take a couple of minutes each and maybe ask some questions, then we can go to public comment. But I, I see that probably not going to have enough time to get through all of it. But we can at least start the conversation and, and, and start to ask ourselves those, those reasons. Why you might be saying no, and also the reasons why you might be saying yes, because that can communicate to those who, who may be opposed. Um, and, and then we can talk about getting into those small groups in those next sessions to try to work through these challenges. So with that. Councilmember Willis.
Yes, uh, I'm, I'm not sure which one of you could answer the question, but, uh, do you have any comparative statistics? On the 516 other roundabouts in Florida to this intersection?
So a lot of those roundabouts, there's different types of design criteria. Some of them are the modern roundabout that will be proposing for A1A. Uh, some of them are a little bit older roundabout criteria, many roundabouts. Um, but as far as how they compare to the one on A1A, we do have some statistics. Um, like the ones that Anthony mentioned, the Sarasota one, um, the other one. No. Um, that have similar traffic volumes basically on A1A. And we'd be happy to go back to our traffic operations group, which Zach is here to represent and he can help us kind of dig in a little bit deeper. Um, so if it's kind of an apples to apples volumes between, you know, we can certainly dig into that a little bit more and get you guys some. More specific answers on that in the small group meetings.
Uh, I would appreciate having those statistics on comparing apples to apples. Thank you.
Council, if you've got some, Councilmember Davis, you're good? Okay, thank you. Yes.
I just have a couple of questions. Thank you very much. The presentation was excellent. I do have to make a comment that I never understood. Two major things about the study and about the presentation. I did not understand until I had seen it more in depth. About the raised bike and pedestrian crossings and where the pedestrian and bike crossings would be. All right. And I think that that would, those two things were very important. Because I think that a lot of people misunderstood thinking that they would go across near the circle or the roundabout. The other thing, uh, that's part of my idea. The next thing, I just don't understand. Why, if we go with the alternative two that you came up with. Why the speed cannot be reduced to 35 miles per hour? I just don't understand that because it seems as though it is 35 miles per hour south of here. And I could never understand why we could never get the reduction that we've been begging for for more than 10 years.
So a couple of things, right? Cause those are two very different, um, pieces of the project. So the crosswalks, the opportunities to get across A1A that you were concerned about. So the pedestrians will still have designated striped crosswalks on every leg of the roundabout. So they do have the option to cross at that intersection. We are currently looking at evaluating a couple of different options for signalized options at the roundabout just for the pedestrians. So that could be similar to what we have seen before with RRFBs or the rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacons. So those sort of ones that you see further south on A1A. We could also look at doing or evaluating the PHBs or pedestrian hybrid beacons at those crosswalks. To stop the traffic, just like we'd be doing at the mid block crossing locations. Now, someone mentioned that some pedestrians may not, at least in the beginning, feel comfortable navigating around the roundabout. It's new, they're unfamiliar. So until they get comfortable, there will be additional crossing opportunities. On the south and north side of International and North Atlantic. Along the project, we'll be introducing three mid block crossings. Then there's the crossing, of course, that's existing today at Central Boulevard. And then crossing at North Atlantic. And then Anthony's project is looking at doing a crossing at Jackson Street as well. So the point is to give them lots of opportunities to safely get across A1A. Did that help answer the first question? So with the second one, um, we talked about those key principles and managing speeds is kind of that first step. We have to evaluate and we go through an analysis of what we believe an appropriate target speed could be for the roadway. And then we have to figure out what elements can we reasonably fit within the project to achieve that target speed. Just lowering the speed will not accomplish this. If we leave the road straight and flat, just dropping the posted speed is not going to change driver behavior. Right? We have to do all of these things together to be able to change the roadway characteristics. When you looked at those two side by side images for the access points, I thought that that was really telling. On the left side, you had a picture of basically what you would think your roadway looks like today, very little differences. And then on the right picture, you had your new A1A corridor at 30 miles an hour. So between 30, 35 and 40, it might not sound like it's that big of a difference, but it does make a difference. Right? So at 30 miles an hour, when we talked about the difference in, in safety for the pedestrians. That big difference between 40 miles an hour with an 85% percent chance of fatality or serious injury. Versus 45% at 30 miles an hour and 5% chance of fatality at 20 miles an hour. So those five miles per hour difference makes a big difference. And we really have to evaluate what we think we can reasonably achieve along this corridor. And without the curvature off of 528. And the roundabout project at North Atlantic to book in the project limits. We cannot lower the speeds enough. The signal itself will not slow people down. There's a signal there today and they're going 45 plus, right? So for this roadway, we need to do something a little bit more drastic to be able to drop the target speed and change driver behavior.
Thank you. I have to tell you that I experienced on Thursday, I had to take my sister-in-law to the villages. And my husband and I decided that we wanted to get to 46 East. So we took that road that had about, seemed like it was 20 or 25 roundabouts. And you have to reduce your speed to 20 in order to go 20, 25. And I saw there that the people in the villages had no problem navigating those roundabouts. And I imagine they use them every day or frequently. So I was impressed with that. And as I said, I never had seen all those roundabouts in the past when I had to drop her off once every year in the villages. So I thought, well, the people in villages can do it. Certainly the people in Cape Canaveral can. Thank you.
I think Anthony's slide said that there were 30 something odd roundabouts just in the villages alone.
Councilmember, good? Mayor, pretend?
Hi, thank you guys for coming. A couple of questions. So you say that we need both things, so. The project on George T.
Right.
And the roundabout and not that, how is that one slow? How far out do you see the funding?
So I will probably let Jared answer the second part of that question. Um, the, the intersection project, how it started was not originally a roundabout. They were just going to look at upgrading to a signal. But adding that fourth leg tripped what we call an ICE or an intersection control evaluation. So this tripped an extensive evaluation to make sure that whatever we did at that intersection. Was going to be most appropriate for that specific location. That is how the roundabout came about. When all this was happening, we started having meetings with the city and the TPOs to get an idea of what you guys wanted to do along A1A. That stemmed this other project. So that's why the intersection project was already funded for construction and mostly funded for right of way. When we developed the redesign project. Now I know if we get this modern roundabout installed, then there is that more of a push on us to make sure that we put in that roadway project. I don't know if you want to talk about that. I'm not sure on the timeline of that. Jared can answer that better.
Thank you Lori and Mayor, councilmembers. Um, thank you for your questions and all of the dialogue we've had. It's been very helpful. I really like it when, um, employees delegate responses up to their bosses. It's very entertaining. So. Thank you for that. Um, I will say that, um. You know, Lori mentioned that these two projects do in fact go together to, to really accomplish the city's vision for a safer. Um, place making type feel that really meets your character and, and, and really provides that, that, um. Great experience for pedestrian, pedestrians and bicyclists. That doesn't mean that they both have to be built at the same time, but you know, the, the intersection project obviously came first. And then the roadway project was conceded. I remember first coming down as district secretary, it was just over two years ago. And I actually sat down with then councilmember Morrison. And you know, he, he emphatically stated to me, this project is very important to the city. What can we do to advance it? And, and I, and I believe that, um, you know, one of the things that we talked about was having community support and building that momentum and working through the TPO. And really when the community comes together and starts speaking with one voice, that's when we can really start moving things forward. Transportation funding, transportation projects, it's a very competitive environment. You know, there's, resources are always scarce. I mean, everybody knows that. There's never enough money to do everything that everybody wants on every project in every community. So. So it is, it is definitely a challenge, but this project is very important. Um, FDOT is laser focused on safety and I mean laser focused. We have a vision zero. We have a goal of getting to zero fatalities on the transportation system. It's a very lofty goal, but we're very serious about it, which is why we're taking this project seriously. And why we sincerely mean what we say when we want to listen. We want to bring a project to you that the community wants. We want to bring a project to the community desires, but we also at the same time want to save lives. This is something we're very, very passionate about. I think you could probably hear that in, in Lori and Anthony's presentation. And, and, um, you know, one thing I want to leave you with and answering that question, um, there's time. It's very important to understand there's time. The intersection project itself is not actually funded till 26. Um, we, we need to hear what your concerns are about the roundabout. Um, you, and we, we want an opportunity to try to address those concerns. You know, if you're worried about pedestrians getting across the road or you're worried about somebody not understanding how to navigate it, we have a lot of opportunities to make a lot of changes. We have plenty of time to talk about that things. We're not going to be breaking ground tomorrow. There's there's time. You know, it's not funded till twenty-twenty-six, and so it's really important to us to continue that dialogue and and hear that feedback. Thank you.
Thanks, boss.
You don't know off the top of our head. I know there's more down in South Florida, I believe.
Because A-1A does span other districts other than District Five. I don't believe that there is a modern roundabout currently on A-1A in our districts.
I know there's one in St. Lucie County, up from Port St. Lucie originally, and I know they put one out there. That's right by the beach access.
Yeah, we'd go along with Councilman Willis's question, which is finding comparable modern roundabouts on state road systems. It may not be A-1A, but maybe it's similar traffic volumes to A-1A.
After the roundabout, hey, what will happen to the road between thirty-five as well? Because a lot of fatalities happen that side.
So we currently don't have a project scoped for south of these project limits. However, I know that whatever we decide to do with this project, with these two projects, I think is going to dictate what we're able to do going further south. I think it is a desire of the city that this kind of reimagining of A-1A does continue to go through the city limits and into Cocoa and beyond. So I think we start here, see what the vision is, see what we can get in the ground, and then that's going to dictate what we can do further south.
Thank you. I've got a long list of questions, so let's start. I'm just, no. I really do have questions and Todd put the ball in my court. What I'm going to do is is email them to you and but I'm going to just ask one or two today that I think are the most important. And in further, I want to aggregate all of the the questions from the community. And so if this council is willing to do it, we've been doing a lot of surveys, but they're so valuable to do a survey and approve it, council can approve, to learn what those objections are, that will help us, and I think it will help FDOT too. Because I know there's small groups, a lot of folks can't make those meetings, and and maybe we can consider that. So I just wanted to plant that seed. But yes, Secretary Perdue and the team had met back, I think it was around twenty-eighteen. And at that time, we had just finished or we're ramping up the twenty-eighteen survey, the probably the biggest survey response we've ever gotten in the city. Well over, I think it was fifteen hundred responses, pretty good for a little city with five, six thousand homes. And glaring, the number one issue was A-1A safety. And so there's no doubt that we want to see A-1A improved. When we were drafting and sending those resolutions in a formal manner, you know, we asked for thirty-five miles an hour, all the things that you went over. And we said, you know, but we didn't ask for a roundabout. And and so when FDOT says, hey, but this is the way you're going to be able to get those safety concerns. The way I understand it from the last meeting, and it's similar to, I think, Councilmember Raymond and Mayor Perkin Kellum's question, is the book-in comment. I'll just briefly explain to to the public here, as I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the there was a lot of opposition from the workshop on on the roundabout. I think the data over eighty percent clearly had some sort of negative comment about it. There was a lot of support for the project to the north, the stretch with the beautification and safer pedestrian crossings. But the way I understood it is, in order to get those types of improvements, and largely represented in the presentation we just saw, is you need to have the roundabout in order to have those. And I my question is, is the bookends, roundabout is a is a deflection that naturally slows people down on the south end or in the middle of the city, rather. The other deflection, so a vertical deflection, trees, a horizontal deflection is what's on the the north side of the city. And I don't know if there was a picture of it in the presentation, but if there would, that would be helpful. That's going to go in and have a turn sharpened up to naturally slow people down. That, what I don't understand is why we need a roundabout to have that installed on the north end of the city. That's because the impacts of the roundabout has to have a diminishing return at some point. I think that when you get within three hundred yards of a roundabout, I think it's going to naturally kind of start that crawl feel. I don't know. I'm just guessing a number. But way on the north end of the city, I don't understand how that's impacted. And so if the projects were reversed, similar to Mayor Perkin's question, is why do you, we need the the roundabout to go ahead and move forward if we were doing that northern project first? That's probably my but I'm just, you know, we're doing the roundabout first because I got aligning international, but it's like if we did that project first, would we say, no, we can't do it unless we have a roundabout on the other end?
So, yes, we we would, if we didn't have the roundabout on the south end, we won't be building the deflection at the beginning of the project because we have to treat these projects as basically one complete project because they do work together. And without, if we just did the curvature coming off of five-twenty-eight, it mimics exactly the geometry that you would experience in a roundabout. That's why it's an effective tool to slow people down. If we just did that, it is just a spot location. It's like if you put a police officer at a location with a radar gun, they'll slow down right there for sure. But as soon as they get out of sight and they have the opportunity, they're going to speed back up again. Now, the challenge we have with A-1A is because it's so straight in this section. When we say we, deflection is a very successful tool in slowing people down, it's not always so dramatic as that curvature or the roundabout. It just means changing the direction. Now, if you had a lot more right-of-way and we could eat into more, you know, roadside property without impacting businesses, or if you already had a median and we could widen into the median, we could introduce that deflection without having to do a roundabout. But that's not the case for A-1A. It's very straight. It's very flat. And there's very little right-of-way to fit in a safety improvement project to really make an impactful change on slowing people down. So that is why they have to work together. When you introduce those spot locations on both ends to slow people down, it allows us to put in more elements in the middle to maintain those speeds. If you just have a spot location, that's all you're going to get. It's slowing people down for a minute. Second, they get out of it, they're speeding right back up.
So the spot, what's it called? The spot reflect, deflection?
A spot location.
Spot location. In the order of heading south or coming off five-twenty-eight, you're entering Cape Canaveral. That horizontal deflection, that little forced turn, today you have the right-of-way to do that. You don't need to, I mean, you have the the
We would have to get additional right-of-way to include the the curvature coming off of five-twenty-eight.
Even with the roundabout?
Even with the roundabout, if we were to introduce, all alternatives are going to require some right-of-way impacts. No matter what we do, we can't get away from that. We will incur additional right-of-way if we do the curvature coming off of five-twenty-eight. So alternative two versus alternative one where we wouldn't do that curvature. But it's an important piece because same as if you reversed it, if you did that horizontal deflection or curvature coming off five-twenty-eight, but not the roundabout, it's the same thing. You're not going to effectively change driver behavior if you do one and not the other.
So my my struggle and understanding is if you get the right-of-way, which under any scenario, it's going to have a positive impact for that stretch on the north without a roundabout. I know this is, this is really hard for me to get. As we head down, there is vertical deflections, trees, medians. Those are going to slow people down. If there was nothing in the middle, it wouldn't be until they get to the roundabout that they slow down again, right? I mean, they could essentially speed up.
So
And so that's where I'm struggling is to go from north to south or south to north. Why the bookend? I don't understand the bookends. And I won't comment anymore, but that's
No, I mean, that I think that probably most people in the room probably have the same concern or or don't understand why that is the case. So if you were just going southbound, I get that you are wondering, we've done that deflection, why can't we do all the other things? But it's a complete roadway, right? We have to accommodate northbound and southbound traffic. So you just reverse it. If you don't have the roundabout going northbound to slow people down, then you have a signal like you have today, and they're driving forty-five plus miles an hour. If we don't do something to slow them down going northbound, then we're not slowing them down as soon as they pass that intersection. They're still going to be driving forty-five plus miles an hour. We know that because we haven't done anything to slow them down. That's that alternative three that we talked about. If we haven't done anything to slow them down coming into that location and we know they're going to be driving faster, that means our median has to get wider because we have design criteria that we have to meet. If we don't do something to slow them down at that spot and we know they're driving faster, that's when the median gets wider, the lanes get wider. Now we have blown out what we call our typical, and now we're impacting properties to achieve that typical all the way down A-1A. That's the forty-one parcels. That's the hundred and nineteen parking spaces. That's the thirty million dollar right-of-way project.
Thank you. I will continue to work with the city manager as said. Any questions for you, city manager?
I just wanted to stress that FDOT is offering to meet with small groups. I'd like my office to help coordinate that if you or anyone in your community, condo association, homeowner association, or whatever would like to put something together, please contact me or alternatively, I'm sure any council member, if you get any requests, you would forward to my office. And we'll make sure we work with FDOT to set up those meetings for you. I think education is key here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. City attorney, anything on your mind with this? Okay. Thank you. At this time, and thank you, we're going to go to public comment. I've got three cards here. I'll give you the final word at this point. Is there anything else you feel like we need to know?
I just really thank you. We appreciate the time to come here and present. And like we've said multiple times, we really are invested in meeting with you guys. I really appreciate what you said about, you know, not just saying no, but tell us why, because that does give us a chance to be able to explain where we're coming from, the analysis that's been done, the engineering behind it, and and in the hopes that that will make people at least feel a little bit more comfortable about why we're recommending what we're doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, we would like to call up Mr. Bob Hathaway. Your addresses were concerned? Thank you. All right, meeting adjourned now. Mr. Bill Hodge.
Bill Hodge, three-six-nine Coral Drive. It just seems to me that FDOT's blackmailing us, blackmailing us. And I just don't understand that. They say speed limit signs don't make any difference. When you come from five-twenty into Cocoa Beach, they go down to thirty-five. I don't see people driving fifty miles an hour right into that intersection. I don't, I don't understand this whole, you can't use speed limit signs. They're used all over the world. That's how it controls speeds. I mean, based on your information, we don't need speed limit signs. Just let people drive however they want to drive. I mean, put a thirty, if you really want people to drive thirty-five, then you need to put a three-mile-an-hour sign when you first come in off of George King Boulevard. Because people figure out they can drive five miles over the speed limit. That's just the way people are. So I just don't understand why you can't have the part from George King down to the intersection, why you can't have that done the way it is in alternative one, and still not have the roundabout. It just doesn't make sense, just like the mayor said. Then also, this is only half of Cape Canaveral. The other, the other half, probably where there's more people getting hurt, is south of the, is south of this thing. So as soon as people leave the roundabout, back up to fifty miles an hour, I guess. Because people don't pay attention to speed limit signs, according to DOT. I mean, they haven't said what kind of speed limit's going to be from there down to Cocoa Beach. So I don't understand. I mean, this doesn't make any sense to me. Anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. And with that, unless our Sergeant Arms got any more cards, that concludes the cards. Now, we do have, you have one more? If you want to come up to the podium, that's all we ask, please. And while you're doing that, I just want to check with our deputy city clerk. Do we have any comments virtually? Okay, thank you.
Peggy Eimer again, from two-thirty-eight Seaport Boulevard, from listening. Couple of things stood out to me, thirty million dollars. How much are they going to spend on just the agriculture and building the median and putting up trees? I'm going to bet it's close to thirty million. So I have a resolution for you. Hire more police. The amount of cars that run through lights that don't stop at stop signs, we just got T-boned three weeks ago and my car was totaled because some lady was on her phone flying through a red light, never even slowed down. These guys work their butts off and they are phenomenal, but they're not even allowed to uphold the law because there's not enough of them. They cannot stop every car that flies through these red lights. We need more of them. So how about you spend the thirty million dollars on more of them that we need? The other issue, the other issue is that this city is huge tourists, snowbirds. They don't, not all of them are going to understand this roundabout thing. And then you have a couple of launches where you've got a couple hundred thousand people driving around like crazy and parking like crazy so that they can watch a launch. I agree. Drop the speed limits to thirty as they come into the town and get these guys to be able to uphold their jobs and do their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, with no more comments. Now, it's also, anything else on this one? Are we ready to move on? So the next steps will be, I think you'll start seeing things from our city administration and or these councils about pulling in in data, and I I would like to do a survey. And so if that's something that we can pull off, that would be great. So again, thank you, Secretary Perdue and the entire FDOT team for taking the time to help inform us. We appreciate y'all. And these slides, will these be on the FDOT website or available for us to view? Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. All right, with that, we are going to move on to interview applicants for the appointment of to the Board of Adjustment, Mr. Stephen Slaton. Are you here tonight? Mr. Slaton, if you want to go ahead and come up to the podium and let our city attorney ask you a couple of questions and
My name is Steve Slaton. I live at five-five-five Fillmore Avenue at the Windjammer. We've lived here approximately three years on property here since two thousand and four. I'm a CPA and an attorney, licensed in Pennsylvania, nothing in Florida. And I just would like to help our our wonderful city, if I can.
Well, good evening to you, sir. Just a couple of questions. One, all the information on your application is true and correct, to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
You've explained generally why you want to serve on the board. The Board of Adjustment, as you know, is a land, is a land-use type board.
You've explained generally why you want to serve on the board. The Board of Adjustment, as you know, is a land, is a land use type board. And they're responsible for making decisions and recommendations regarding land use permits. Do you envision any potential conflicts of interest serving on the Board of Adjustment?
Not at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. This time, thank you for, for that introduction. We got a few questions for you, probably the council, if you don't mind, stay up here, please. Thank you for your taken interest. I'll just kick it off here. The first question is, your number one interest was the Planning and Zoning Board. Is that still the, the, the way you feel today if an opportunity came about, would, would that be of interest?
I would certainly consider it. I, I, I'd like to get my feet wet with the Board of Adjustments before I move on to something else.
Just curious, thank you. With that, city manager, do you know if we're at capacity for the Planning and Zoning Board?
Dave is saying, yes, we are. So.
Okay.
Where are we with the Board of Adjustments? Okay, so we, we, the Board of Adjustment needs them.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, thank you. Very important. And is it possible for him to serve on two boards or would that be a kind of one at a time? Okay, I, I want to thank you for, for taking the time to do this. You are a lawyer and a CPA. That is impressive and, and we're, we're lucky to have you.
My, my wife still doesn't think I can do it.
Well, thank you again. And with that, counsel, any questions for Mr. Slaton?
No, just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. This time now we are ready to speak with Mr. George Weber, who will, I believe, put us at a quarrel, it sounds like. With you, we, we are possible. So appreciate it very much in the same routine here. Our city attorney, Mr. Weber, is just going to ask you a couple of questions. Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Is all of the information in your application is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
Okay, as you've heard that, you know, this is a Board of Adjustments, a land use board, deals with development permits. Do you anticipate any potential conflicts of interest?
No, I don't.
Okay, and please explain to the council why you would like to serve on the Board of Adjustment.
I was on work of New Berlin for about five years. And I was somewhat educated to do the Board of Adjustments. And there were a lot of things that we were involved with. And I found it very interesting. I'd like to help the city out if there are any complications.
Thank you, city attorney. Thank you, Mr. Weber. I want to thank you as well. We are lucky to have you. I'm excited that we have a quorum. Board of Adjustment is an important board. Probably some of the most significant decisions are made right there in the Board of Adjustment. A lot of them that goes, will, will rival what we have to decide as a council. And so I know you'll take that very seriously and your heart is in the right place and just want to thank you. Counsel, any particular order?
Come to the board meetings and I'll see you there. I guarantee it. Well, I hope, I hope it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I know that you'll do a good job. My husband was on Board of Adjustments before I became a council member. And he enjoyed the work. Thank you. Thank you. We try hard.
Mayor Proton, good? Thank you, Mr. Weber. Appreciate it. Keep in touch. Let us know. And recruit some more Board of Adjustment members out there if we can. Thank you. We are now going to move on to the consent agenda at this time. If anyone would like to pull a, an agenda item, please just let me know the number of the item we'll pull it. And then after that, we'll vote the remaining through. I do want to, before we go into here, let you know that I have requested to add on due to this past month. I spoke with our city manager briefly about this and just kind of whipped up a, a, a summary of the IRL Indian River, River Lagoon Marine Resource Council opportunity to be a Friends of the Lagoon partnership. They have a representative here tonight, Mr. Steve Sharkey. And they will be teaching on Monday, the Indian River, the, the report card that gets put out every night. And so I know you didn't have a lot of time to review. It's a summary about the opportunity. And so my request is if we can add on the agenda item at the, at the beginning of the discussion, I don't anticipate more than a few minutes, just to give this council an opportunity to consider it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item six.
Before we do that, I need to get consensus on adding on the agenda item if, if we have that here. City Attorney, do we need a motion and a second to add on an agenda?
Uh, yes, you do.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to add.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Mayor Proton Kellum. Any concerns or discussion? City Clerk, would you please call the roll to add on the agenda item?
Councilmember Davis? Mayor Proton Kellum? Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Thank you. Motion passes five oh to add the agenda item on. And with that, Councilmember Willis, thank you for your patience. You would like to pull item number six?
Yes, I would.
About it. Okay, item number six and seven have been requested to be pulled. Any others? Councilmember Davis or Councilmember Raymond? All right, so with that, I'm looking for a motion to adopt consent agenda items one through five.
I'll make a motion to adopt agenda items one through five.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second by Councilmember Raymond to adopt agenda items one through five. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis? Mayor Proton Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes five oh. All right, in order, number six would be first, approve the proposal from Tetra Tech in the amount of sixty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-nine dollars to complete a canaveral drainage basin stormwater study and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Councilmember Willis?
Yes, in regards to the recent storms and flooding we've had. And I'd like to discuss a few items with that and I would like to ask the city manager to update us on a couple of items.
On the Center Street?
Yes.
I would appreciate it as well. Counsel, if we're good with that, I think it's great.
Thank you. As we all know, we've had some crazy storms. We had last week, we had some backup in the Center Street basin. We, what we think we know is a contributor to the problem in this case was also the oak leaves that have fallen. I can't believe how many oak leaves are all over our streets, but they got washed into these drains. So crews were out there raking oak leaves out of the drains and that helped to make the water subside. We had another rain the following day on Saturday. We did have the, the emergency pump, trailer mounted pump out on site, ready to go for that. So what I wanted to share with council, and this is coming up at the retreat, for the Center Street basin, we have an emergency situation that we're addressing. We've got a very near short-term solution we're going to be proposing. We've got a midterm solution and we have a long-term solution. And I'm glad that you brought this up because I wanted to get council's feeling on this. So let me tell you what those four are. Number one, the emergency one is a drawdown pump, which is currently stationed at Center Street, ready to go. What it does, if you take the, the concept of, you know, two straws going into one cup, two people sucking on straws makes that water go down faster. It's the same theory that you've got the water that goes out of the pipe into the lagoon, but you're also sucking it out with a pump. That's the emergency one. It's in place, it's ready to go. And that's going to help for the immediate solutions when we have these crazy storms. The short-term solution, and we'd like to authorize Mead and Hunt to move forward with a, an evaluation of this and bid documents to put in a permanent pump to do that. This would be on Center Street, somewhere mid-block on Center Street. I don't know exactly where the engineering says this would go. But it would basically do what we've been doing on an emergency basis on a permanent basis, having a pump out there. So whenever it triggers that high water event, that pump would, would just automatically kick on and pump that water out there. There's also something else, Jeff, that we talked about at the outflow, outfall, that what was it, a, a tidal valve? Was that like a backflow prevention essentially? Given the extreme weather events that we've been having, I'd like to ask council if we could move forward and with the, asking Mead and Hunt to give us some specs on that so that we could get the price quotes out there on the street, get the bids out there on the street, come back to council with a proposal to put that permanent pump in. I know we didn't budget for that, but we do think that's a first best solution. Next thing is the intermediate solutions. We've got some properties that we're looking at and we've talked about on and off with council. One of them's on Center Street there, potentially an acre to two acres of storage of stormwater and also treatment for the phosphorus and nitrogen that we would want to not put in the lagoon. That would, that one to two acre pond would serve as a buffer for these heavy rain events. That's, that's a great solution for this. Also, some other properties we've been evaluating in the city, we, we knew that there are some available in the, this is the basin currently for sale. However, Councilmember Willis brought something up and perhaps I can throw this back to you. An idea for using some city-owned property, Mayor, if it's okay, I can have Councilmember, this was his idea. So if I can throw it back to him for this. If that's okay, Mayor.
Perfectly fine.
Well, it's, it's my understanding that the pump itself wouldn't necessarily be a long-term solution to solve all of it. So we would need, like the city manager proposed, purchasing some property for, I would imagine, exfiltration projects. But we already have property. I propose that we create an exfiltration project with vaulted chambers utilizing property we have scheduled under the promenade city hub. We take that property, we, I have spoken with Gustavo about the racquetball courts and the repair that's going to have to come to those. I think he estimated it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars to bring those up to a standard. And they're not used very often. And we also do not use the shuffleboard courts. My proposal is that, or what I would like to propose, is that we create an exfiltration project on all of that property, which would bring us close to, I believe, three acres of land to create those vaulted storage. And it would relieve the pressure on the, on the systems that are currently going in the Center Street basin. And that, that is where I think we should, we should head. We already have the property. We wouldn't have to purchase necessarily property right away for anything. And I think it would be an excellent use of what we have already.
Thank you. Kind of think back to you, right? As you were getting through the list. And if you don't mind, from the top, a quick recap where we are. Emergency drone pump is what we have today.
Emergency, it's a, a trailer mounted pump. The short-term solution would be a permanent pump that we will put out there. And we would ask the council for council's blessing. You can give it tonight if you want. We'll authorize Mead and Hunt to do the bid spec so we can put it out to bid and come back. Jeff, maybe within two months with some numbers for a permanent pump? Yeah, we can, we could do that as a short-term solution. Then we've got the midterm solutions, which are property and, and storm, either storage above, you know, a pond or retention pond or vaulted chambers, as Councilmember Willis suggests. Both excellent ideas. Then long-term would be in the Presidential Streets Master Plan. Report comes back to city council about how we want to redevelop Presidential Streets. I think it's a good, a very good idea to put in a target reduction of stormwater outfall into the system, period. If you targeted a reduction, let's just say it's twenty percent or it's thirty percent of what's currently going in there today in this basin. If we put in the design for the Presidential Streets, whatever we design, how we do that, we want a reduction of twenty-five percent of that. So whatever that turns into, bio swales, additional right of way that turns into green space or maybe more chambers underneath the roads or something like that. The Presidential Streets Master Plan is, as we, we all know, is a long-term fix. That's probably twenty-five years in the making. But if we, if we target this in the design, we, I think with all three of these, short, medium and long-term, I think we can get there. I think we, we can get where we need to be with Presidential Streets. So that's what's going to be presented in a nutshell at the retreat for the, for the stormwater problem that we're experiencing here. I, I commend Councilmember Willis for his forward-thinking ideas. We're going to be designing a civic hub. Why not put stormwater storage underneath it? I, I think that makes a lot of sense. And lastly, the actual item here, I don't know if there are questions on it. This is to do, to authorize Tetra Tech to do a complete drainage basin stormwater study for the canaveral drainage basin, which is the area shown on the map that was just up there. It's basically what we had Mead and Hunt do for Center Street. We're having him do for the canaveral basin. I don't know if there's any questions on that, but Mayor, that's all I have.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just got to, because we, we got two things, it's all related. The water falls on our two square mile city and we got our challenges. This works into it. My question is, I love the ideas, especially of using existing property, the, the short-term solutions, the pumps. But I would like to see what Mead and Hunt has actually proposed. Because we invested how much money for that study?
Was it fifty-four? Sorry? It was forty thousand.
Forty thousand. And then we also hired them again for the, that facilities plan a couple of years prior. And they've done a stormwater study. And so we put probably near, if not over a hundred thousand dollars in engineering studies. And I want to see how that compares to the ideas that we heard tonight. Because we've got, I got ideas too, but they're the experts. And I, and I think that that, that would be my request is April is what I think I read in an email is when that will be presented. But I don't want to, for me, start moving forward with proposals to go out and get quotes for pumps when we haven't seen the study yet. So that's.
Well, we do have an emergency procedure in place.
Yes.
We can afford to wait.
And we can just call the mother nature and say, don't rain. So, okay, that's it. Councilmember Raymond?
I was just going to say, congratulations. I think it's a grand idea. I think that it's a wonderful solution to a problem that we've been trying to find. Also, I would like to say that I know Florida League of Cities has a lot of grants having to do with stormwaters and wastewater problems. I think, you know, we should apply. And I know that a lot of these are not taken by people. So I, and I know our staff does a wonderful job applying for grants. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Willis, any morphing on your question? Councilmember Davis, sorry. Thank you.
I just think that it would give us the opportunity to make a quicker impact on the, the rainfall issues that citizens are having and the flooding. I spoke with Mr. Radoff about this and how long he thought it could take. He thought we could do something like this within a year, which moves us along.
See what the experts have to say.
True, true, yeah.
About it. And if they, I mean.
But if those are, if those are the things that we need, if those are the things that we need to make a positive impact on some of the residents that are being flooded, then I think it, excuse me, Jeff, did I speak out of, speak out of school?
No, please go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I just wanted to say the final report is due this week. So you'll get it as soon as I do.
Thank you very much. Yep, and I understand it takes work. And to, to your point, the original facilities plan, there was a few proposed projects right there on Center Street that goes into, to that outfall. One of them was an underground exfiltration system, just like you're saying, but. One of them was an underground exfiltration system, just like you're saying, but it required under the road. It was a million dollar project, I think. The other one was acquiring that land right next to it, which was a, a, a pond that was less money, but you gotta get, you gotta get site control. So the idea that you can take advantage of where you already have site control is, 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 is good.
It's my understanding that property on Center Street, we have a very good chance of getting it at a very low cost. And I know that's what Dave Dickey's group is working on and Todd's working on.
That's great. Thank you all. And the sent, back to this wire up here, this is the central ditch, so your team, Tim Carlisle, they just cleaned that ditch or prepped the ditch, they.
They cleaned out all of it.
You got the cobwebs out, I mean, you now have an understanding of what the problem is. And so this is now going to be kind of the next step to expand the whole basin and do a study on how we can improve that area.
Yeah, the Canaveral Basin's the largest basin in the city. It's got the largest stormwater pipe in the city. And of course, it's got the central ditch, which has had a number of problems over the years. I mean, there's been some serious flooding in the ditch. So maybe we're missing something, maybe the consultant can come up with another approach. So we'd like to give it a shot. It's a budgeted item, we looked at this last year. So we would like to move forward with it.
That's great, thank you, I would too, I think it's excellent. And we brought up, I mean, there's so many great ideas. I, I went to the Low Impact Development Conference at the Marine Resource Council and these guys blow your mind about all the things that we can be doing. I've talked with some members here in the audience about multifaceted, you know, you got your quick short term fixes to just relieve the water. But it was no coincidence that we sat right here for that resiliency training. We talked about low impact development, we talked about all of these initiatives from extreme ideas to, to practical solutions. We went through some exercises of role playing, of setting a budget and spending resources, and it was really helpful to understand. The goal was to get the council and the public thinking about this, and it certainly did that for me, but the very next day is when that's, that heavy storm, we got in point eight inches, I think, in fifteen minutes. And some, some really high rates, and so thank you all, and thank you for pulling this aside, I knew the public wanted some answers.
Mayor, if I could just add a couple more things, you mentioned Tim Carlisle, he is putting together a series of some community meetings that are intended to be educational, we'll be promoting these in the coming weeks where we'll talk about what residents need to know and what they can do about fertilizers, illicit discharges, yard waste and debris, reporting illicit discharges, things you can do to help, and so on. So you'll be hearing about those in the coming weeks. Just trying to get the word out there and also get feedback from the residents as well. And finally, I believe our Administrative Services Director, John Delia, wants to add, address the council on this.
Yes, everything that was discussed here just, just in the last few minutes with stormwater, these are all qualified for ARPA funds. So if it's not in the budget and it's something we're going to do prior to thirty September, we have the money, okay, and you could spend that with the ARPA funds. Something else to remind council is that as the strategic retreat, of course, y'all know this, council will identify the projects that are gonna be ARPA funded. I know in a few council meetings before, we gave a list, it was in your packages about to what we project that could be used for ARPA funds, obviously, we're going to get five point two million dollars. But everything we want to do will probably cost a lot more than that. So when, we will rely on council at the strategic retreat, when that retreat is over, the council will provide to the city manager those projects that could be ARPA funded. And then I will report to the state, I have to report to the state in April. Now, the good thing is is that if you identify a project you want to be ARPA funded and it's in the future, you could change that. So like, if we have five projects, it's not like they're going to say, well, you said these five, that's, no, we could adjust to that. Okay, and we're going to get, be given a little more freedom now because we are going to take what's called the standard allocation or the standard, yeah, the standard allocation, which means we're a city that's getting less than ten million dollars. So that gives us a lot more freedom. But as we go through this and, you know, of course, it's been a big issue with the citizens and everything, these stormwater projects, you know, I, I see council probably leaning a lot towards that, that, that is not all that has, that this money has to go towards. We'll have a rate study, there's a rate study that's going to start, it's coming up, could be, it's covered by ARPA because we're, we're going to have to look at, you know, is our utility rates in the next five years going to sustain us? So some of those may need to be increased, but that's why the city pays for a study. And they tell us what we should increase, recommended to council, and then council determines how the rates should be raised, okay? And then we'll have to do a reclaimed water also. So there's some good news there. So, you know, it's not like we're taking this out of our current budget, there's some good news there. And I just wanted to share that with you, but when council comes out of that strategic retreat, and there's going to be a lot of discussion with Public Works and, and Jeff and myself and the others, and you'll be able to settle in on there. I know, for instance, there's a, and I'll just say this, I'll be done, there is a Public Works project for clarifiers that have to be done, one point four million. Well, you know, that's, that's ripe for ARPA funds. And so I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. City manager, anything else?
That was it, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, my final comment on this is there's very few, other than the A one A and some safety and some traffic things, projects, making sure police and fires funded, and we've got a, a good staff keeping permits that are more, as far as projects go, I can't think of hardly any projects that are more important than fixing this issue in the city. And so I just want to express that taking action on these items, the studies are good, I know that study will start, but this one, I think our city manager and for, for seeing the urgency and trying to figure out what we can do because the little stormwater flyers that, I don't know if Zach put them together, they put, they're in the hallway in front of Melinda's desk, I picked one up and I opened it. This is eighty percent of the rain happens in the summertime. And we are March, April showers, so as soon as we can get this done, I won't say the H word for the windy rainy things that show up here, but if we're lucky to get through that, I think we'll be well positioned to weather the storm, no pun intended, to the next one, so, thank you.
I just wanted to say something, Mayor. I just think that this is a major concern and especially with, you know, the flooding that we've had and, and the direction that we're going, I think is great. The, putting the thing, the valves or whatever they are and or city property is a great idea. But we'll take, if we take things away, and I don't know who can answer, you can't put anything, once you put those bevels or whatever they are, under the ground, you can't put any, like, if we wanted to add more pickleball courts, we couldn't do that.
It's my understanding we could put pickleball courts on it, it's just wouldn't be another large structure. We could park on it, we have parking right out here over top of vaulted
Okay.
containers, I mean, we're driving on it.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Todd.
Yes, your mayor, my, my proposal would be, the retreat document will be requesting the city council approve a master plan for the civic hub, where we will lay out the phases of it to including, to include the ex-exfiltration and any other improvements that we feel that we want to have in the civic hub. Once we have a master plan, we have the designers, task the designers to design how the, all these pieces can fit together. For example, if you decided you wanted to put a new structure of some sort out there, we don't want to build a structure on top of a stormwater chamber, so all that has to be master planned, and that's going to take some time and some community thought, working with the community about what amenities we want to have in the civic hub. So your master plan, the whole thing, once you got that nailed down, then you know exactly where you want to put your exfiltration, you've got room for whatever else we want to have.
Thank you. Mayor for Tim Cole.
That's all I had.
All right, council, we've heard it. Just so the public knows, our strategic planning meeting is coming up, help me out, what's, two weeks, the thirtieth, thank you. That's where we are going to go through all the big projects for the next year, we'll measure up how we did on the existing projects that you're seeing done in the city. And I think if you can come to that meeting, it's very business focused, we're working, but there is an opportunity for public comment. And it's where a lot of the, the big concepts and projects come out of since we've started doing that. And so March thirtieth, which will be here before we know it, I think we're going to continue this conversation and have more data to make these decisions. But yes, the public is hitting, I think, all of our email inboxes with the recent drainage issues and flooding and I committed that tonight we would make sure that we, we address it. So thank you for, for bringing that up during this time. It's something that if we did nothing else, I'll say it again, and we got this right, I'd be, I'd be happy, so, thank you. With that, we are looking for a motion to approve the proposal, if there's no discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Item six.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Councilmember Davis, any more discussion, debate on this, council? City clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis. Mayor for Tim Cohen. Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four. All right, motion passes five oh to approve the proposal for Tetra Tech. Now we're moving on to item number seven, approve the city of Cape Canaveral Community Center fees, I do have a public comment card on this, but this item was pulled by Mayor for Tim Killam. Go ahead, please kick this off.
Okay, I just had a few questions for the fees and I had talked to the city manager about it and I wanted to maybe ask Gustavo some questions on the where we come up with these numbers for different fees and like the fees for, mostly the fee schedule that we have right now. It, the vendor fees, like a retail vendor is thirty two ten. Food vendors are fifty three fifty. I looked at one that was three dollars and twelve cents, I, I forget where I saw it offhand, but and, and also my other question is, do residents get breaks on facility rentals as opposed to non-rentals? Oh, there you are. And, you know, where the, where the fees come from and the comparisons you had, are they cities like us, municipalities, or are they county projects?
Do you need or repeat any of those questions, or you think you got them?
Okay.
So I just had my ninth birthday in the city. I haven't raised a single fee since I got here. So whatever fees you see on the schedule, people have been very lucky to be paying for nine years, including Friday Fest. So I don't know where else you can go where no prices have gone up in nine years, but city can, can have all events and open play and things like that is one of them. So that's the existing fees.
So you've never raised, you've never raised these, or are you?
I haven't yet, I can if you want me to.
Well, so like, when you rent a facility, Banana River Park, if you're a resident, is there a different price for Banana River Park than a non-resident?
Not currently, the only discounts that, thank you, Molly. The only discounts that we would normally give is to nonprofits. So when somebody presents a certificate of, you know, being a five oh one C three, then there's fifty percent off. So obviously the BFW's rented some stuff from us, there's churches that rent pavilions from us. But there's never been a resident discount for rentals. This is again in nine years, my first time here, if that's something you would like to propose, there's your man and let's make it happen.
Yeah, I would like to propose that, you know, residents get a cheaper fee on, on renting Manatee Park or Banana River Park.
Okay. Absolutely.
Non-resident, I mean, they did foot the bill for the parks to begin with. And this, you know, in the odd amount, I, I forget where I saw it offhand, like rental vendor thirty two ten.
Retail, yeah, so that's because it's thirty plus tax. So, and, and the way it was coded when we were trying to get all this thing onto Springbrook, and then, you know, it was like, it had to be like that, I.
So it automatically adds the tax.
It automatically added the tax, yeah.
Part of the challenge that we were dealing with when Gustavo and I first came in is the city didn't take credit cards. And if somebody came in prepared with their twenty dollar booth fee check, they either had to rewrite the check, write an additional check, or we just couldn't accept the payment. So right out of the gate, and you've been to the Leisure Services Center, this is what appears right there front and center, so that before they go to write out that check,
Right.
they were aware that there was tax added to that. So technically, the only change that has been made were in the taxes associated with the lagoon tax, so that's the only thing that's gone up in our prices is the taxes.
And as far as the Friday Fest and the vendor fees and all that, are these comparable to other cities?
Yeah, you know, what I've found, and as you can see from the spreadsheet that I included, it, it seems to me that overall fees in most municipalities for a lot of different things are just arbitrary. It's just, you know, they, they come up with them and they study the market. But, you know, every municipality charges whatever they think their the event, the facility can support, you know, so there's, as you can see, they run the gamma, but there's facilities, for example, that don't offer all the amenities that ours is going to offer that are in very distressed areas, so then obviously they're supported a hundred percent to where it's just open for people and, you know, so every municipality does what they think is best for their community. In coming up with these fees in particular, I took into consideration the existing fee schedule, so as you see, the proposed fees are very similar to what people already accustomed to paying. All we added was the monthly and yearly fee. And when it comes to, you know, using the facility, so let's say you come play pickleball or, or a racquetball, tennis and the same here, there's a significant discount for being a resident and especially a senior resident. So when it comes to actual user fees outside of rentals, that's always been a consideration in there.
Okay. That was my questions, I just didn't know, you know, I would like to propose that the citizens get a break on running, you know, facilities. I don't know if we do that now or how that works.
If, if council wants to give us some direction, we could come back with a proposal.
Couple, I just want to piggyback off that, my concern is, will differential rates apply to that where you're charging difference that we saw with parking? And the second thing that just occurred to me is we kept saying fees, fees. This was on the consent agenda. City attorney, don't we, why is this not required by ordinance? Is it as a fee? I felt that our ordinance requires all fees need to be, our charter, that all fees need to be approved by ordinance, or is this?
Not sure of that, off the top of my head, I can look, but.
And with that, when is the deadline, I guess, because you want to open, right, and so I'm trying to.
I think.
Yeah, the multi-generational facility will probably be open when, Gustavo, I, I want to hear this too.
Well, we're, we're targeting late April as of now. You know, every, every time we, we get a we see a light at the end of the tunnel, then you start to see it close up because of some.
Unseen thing.
Unseen thing because of the current condition of the construction industry, unfortunately, so you know, it's always two steps forward and then all of a sudden we get hit with something out of, out of left field, you know.
Delays mostly.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and so we're targeting late April as of today, so.
That's, that gives us an idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to verify, I don't want to overload, sorry.
I was going to finish her question, which she said, are the facilities that I researched like our city? And here's what I'll tell you, there is no community center like the one in our city, a public community center in Brevard County. And there's not very many because for the most part. And there's not very many because uh, for the most part, they're very large. Even if, even though they're public, they're very large, so it's very hard to compare an apples to apples. So when you take every single county community center, none of them have a weight room. You're gonna have a weight room with an upstairs walking track, right? Most county community centers uh, just mainly consist of rooms and a basketball gym. Uh, when you think, the closest one in Brevard County is called a Tony Rosa Community Center. And that one does have a small weight room, but again, that's a nineteen-seventies building, the weight room's real tiny. And uh, so it's really not comparable. So, when you're looking at the evolution of public recreation, what you guys are getting is, you're getting like um, a miniature version of what people are doing in, you know, very um, uh, prolific uh, recreation uh, places like Colorado and, you know, just places that invest hundreds of millions into their facilities. You're getting a, a city-sized version of that.
Um, and my other question, I'm sorry, I just had one more. We, we talked about these insurance companies that were trying to get on board to be there.
Yeah.
What fees will they be charged? Is there a, is there a flat fee that?
No, so the way it works, I'll give you an example, let's just say I'm part of um, XYZ Insurance Company. And, and they are part of that thing. What happens is, on the back end, we work with those companies and that person gets to come for free. And then the city gets paid from that insurance company per visit of those guests.
But I mean, what is that fee for that person, it's free for them.
It's free for them.
Somebody pays.
The insurance company will pay us.
What, what are we charging the insurance company?
Well, we don't. Yeah, it, it.
It would be like.
Those are set, those are fees that are set by the insurance company. So, some of them, for example, and they're mostly for seniors, a lot of these programs. And so they'll have like either a twenty or thirty dollar per month maximum. So for us, we actually kinda get the better end of that if they. Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you, City Attorney, did you have?
Yes, I did, Mayor, um, with respect to rates and, and fees and charges for the public utility that's required to be adopted by ordinance, uh, fifty-four dash twenty-four of the city code regarding parks and parks fees says that the council will establish um, fees by resolution.
So we're good, because it's under parks and rec, or uh, cultural leisure services?
Propose a resolution? Yeah, there is.
But it's one reading.
Right, just one, um, one reading on the resolution for parks and rec fees. Utility rates, I, I heard that there's gonna be a utility study, rate study. If the council were to change the rates, then ordinance would be required for utility services.
So if this consent agenda, agenda item is approved, we will uh, consider it direction to staff to present a resolution for council approval.
Sounds good.
With the changes on the facility rentals for resident, non-resident?
The, um, yeah, and we wanna talk about facility rentals, we'd like some guidance there. You can um, you can pick a, a percentage to reduce for residents, if there's, if there's the will to do that. Or maybe we might consider keeping them the same for residents, but raising them for non-residents, there's a couple of different ways to look at it.
This is a um, this is gonna, I think, takes time, we can't, I think, we can get it launched and, and kind of tweak it and work it over time, right? I think that that might be the best approach, but I, we just wanna, I think, start with the best foot forward, for sure, not to talk too vague. But um, yes, generally I like what I'm hearing about locals versus non. And did you, um, is that going to be an issue, the whole differential rates for?
I think you're going to the Sherri Town Park issue, yeah. We don't have any control over Sherri Town Park hit, but I think any of these activities wouldn't be occurring at Sherri Town Park.
Uh, differential that.
I thought that applied to any.
That, that, those are uh, in, in my experience in parks and recreation, those um, differential fees only apply when uh, state funds or federal funds from grants are applied towards a project. So in this particular project, there, there's no grant funds that were tied to, so that's usually a stipulation. So um, when it comes to, to non-differential fees, which, by the way, I do have to look into that because there are some grant funds associated with Banana River and with Manatee Sanctuary Park. So, thank you for that, because there may be some stipulations there. As far as this facility, uh, you know, there, there's, obviously there's already the di- the differential fee when it comes to the daily, monthly and yearly, but um, if you wanted to do that to the room rentals, you're not tied to anything. I'll just have to do a little research on Banana River and Manatee Sanctuary Park, just to make sure.
We'll come back with that, with the resolution of that research.
Yes, just knowing, um, verifying what you said would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Um, and because that's the problem with a lot of grants, is the strings attached aren't worth it. It'd be better to try, to give locals a, a discount and a break than take the ten thousand dollars in grants.
Yeah.
You know, and so I think if we weigh that, we'll be in a far better.
Yeah, and, and uh, usually they don't fund pavilions, so that's where kinda, you know, so you don't fund the pavilions, you can't necessarily dictate what you charge at that pavilion, but they do fund like a soccer field, outdoor recreation, right? And that's what happened at Banana River, they helped fund a kayak launch, they helped fund the bocce and golf. But there was no money for the pavilion, so I just have to weave myself through that whole thing and I'll work with Molly through that whole thing.
Thank you.
And it'll also include, it'll also include discussing with finance, what's the, the cleanest way to, to make um, those differences, so.
Thank you, yeah, the, my two, I've got some more questions, those were the two big ones, cause I just didn't wanna put a lot of time in. Sounds like we figured out a resolution and differential rates will verify, Councilmember Raymond, yes?
I wanted to ask about Saturday and Sunday. Our rec center hasn't been open on Saturday and Sunday. I do see a lot of people playing pickleball out there all weekend, they have their own nets. Are we going to have our community center open on Saturday and Sunday?
Uh, well, the intended hours are not for Sunday, but Saturday. Um, you know, it's, it's all a staffing issue, so right now, what we're proposing is um, Monday, to, to mirror the hours we have existing at the Nancy Hansen Recreation Complex, which would be eight AM to nine PM Monday through Thursday, eight AM to eight PM on Fridays. And Saturday is probably nine to three, ten to three, something like that, and then closed on Sundays.
Can you say that one more time, please, cause that was, the hours of operation?
Eight AM to eight PM on Fridays. And because we don't have it currently in place, those are currently the Nancy Hansen hours. What we're exploring for the Saturday hours that we could probably carry over between the two facilities, provided we can staff it appropriately, is something like ten to three, nine to three, kind of a midday, a little bit of morning, a little bit of afternoon, but it's not open the full, full scope.
For Saturday?
For Saturday.
Confirmed yet?
Nothing is confirmed yet, and we've had no discussions about Sundays.
We're getting a bother idea.
Member Willis, Councilmember Davis? Um, so yes.
Yep.
Oh, one question, it, is it my understanding that it's going to be free for everyone for the first, how long?
Not everyone.
Okay.
Only residents.
Residents. And how long will that be?
October one is what this particular agenda item proposes.
She asked, um, is, is there gonna be a period of time from when it launches, if it's going to be no charge for residents? And I think the answer was, yes.
So does this have to be, I mean, do we have to approve this now, or can we wait until we have all the information together and the resolution? Where do, do we have to pass this?
The resolution will be effective the day of the council meeting.
This doesn't do anything.
Right, this is just giving staff direction.
Okay.
But, yep, my, knowing that we got a resolution, I won't go, um, some of the questions, we do get a public comment card um, here, but the, knowing the hours of operation and understanding like the staffing and how it's gonna work, just the operations cost, the, the same way you would approach um, a, a, a business um, or like we approach our wastewater, those enterprise funds and things, it's like, Parks and Rec is one of those fee-for-service, which I think i- is a good opportunity. And so knowing the availability and the estimated, I know we did high-level O and M costs before, but now that the building is, it was very difficult then to make a prediction, I can't remember what we put in the capital improvement plan per year, but now that we have electrical, um, staffing, understandings, hours of operation, it would be helpful for the next meeting to, to verify if that operation uh, and maintenance costs are pretty close to what we were predicting and estimating. Because that's gonna drive, I think, a, a good idea on how the fees will, will bear up. It, it may not, it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, profitable, but it will at least give us, anytime that you can build a project that pays for itself over five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, that's a good thing for the taxpayers in this community, um, without making it, you know, uh, so costly, no one uses it. And so, there's a lot of things I like that I'm hearing, um, and I think, um, I do like the idea just to get feedback of the residents having a different um, fee, if we can, if we can do that legally, I think that's excellent. Um, I think considering the, the op, the operations cost, i- is something um, that, that I wanna factor, so knowing that would be helpful. And I did get an email from the, the lady who, uh, Ms. Rong, who wants to speak today. So, I had two more points, but she might be, if she's here tonight, Ms. Rong, are you here? Okay, got it, I won't state your points, cause you very well might say them, so if this council's ready, uh, welcome, um, that's you, Rong, and your address and?
Uh, seventy-four-eight Civila Court.
Thank you.
Um, so the issues that I'm bringing up tonight in regards to the fee schedule for the multi-generational facility were brought to the last Culture and Leisure Board meeting. And they suggested that I bring my concerns to the city council, as that's where the final decision will be made concerning the new fee schedule. Uh, the important question that should be considered is, now that the need um, will be for there to be staff at two locations, and with the additional upkeep, maintenance, personnel and et cetera, will the fees charged be able to cover a substantial portion of the operating expenses at the new facility, just as you were, had brought up, Mayor? Um, I'm concerned about the proposed fee, fee schedule uh, that you all have in your packet, as it's making only a very minor adjustment to the current fee schedule in place. Uh, I would have expected that with a facility containing state-of-the-art gym equipment, indoor pickleball courts, walking track, basketball courts, et cetera, that the fees for non-resident seniors and adults would be increased to help recoup some of these additional expenses that this new facility will require. To equate the fees charged today for outside pickleball, tennis, shuffleboard uh, with this new inside facility and all that it will offer, it does not seem to be appropriate. I have some thoughts for the council to consider concerning adult patrons at the new facility only, now this is only for adults. Um, I think the children fees are good, so I'm, I'm just addressing the adults. Uh, first off, I propose that a resident be defined as anyone that legally resides within the city limits as evidenced by their driver's license, property tax bill, or utility bill. The proposal on the table is saying that anyone staying in the city for sixty days receives the resident rate. But I don't know how they would expect this to be verified, and that is supposedly the rule today. I think it would be only appropriate to show taxpayers that their hard-earned tax dollars are giving them a significant advantage in the use of this facility. Uh, I looked over the research that the spreadsheet provided, and you'll see that what is listed is not rate the facility age, its amenities, other than the presence of a weight room and its size. Uh, I've been in some of these facilities and they are not at all in line with the beautiful new facility that we will have here. So therefore, I propose that you consider that a non-resident rate be at least doubled to six dollars per day for a senior and eight dollars a day for an adult. This will be a beautifully appointed facility that sounds to be state-of-the-art. If that is so, then the competition in the area for any other gym facility is very minimal. There's only one gym in Cocoa Beach whose facility is very aged, I go there, so I know this. And they charge five dollars for a permanent resident and ten dollars for any others a- as a daily rate. When you consider the number of people at hotels and vacation rentals that would love to have access to a great gym with great equipment and a walking track, I think that that would be a very reasonable rate to ask from them.
Ms. Rong, if it just, you can wrap it up.
I have just two more things.
Okay, thank you very much, we wanna be fair.
Okay, um, so, um, the one thing I think that struck me with the proposed fee schedule is that a patron would pay upon entry into the building, and then they would have, have full access to that bill. So as a non-resident, you could come in to play pickleball for a few hours, pay the usual two to three dollar rate, yet then you could stay and use the exercise room and the walking track for no additional cost. And it was agreed upon by the Leisure Committee that due to the way that the building is laid out, that trying to have any other process to collect fees upon entry would be just too difficult for the staff to manage. Uh, the only other thing I, I was going to mention was that pickleball here has become a very popular sport, as everybody probably knows. The number of non-residents that now play pickleball in Cape Canaveral is at the rate of sixty to seventy-five percent. And that is, um, I've, we have done some discovery by people who play pickleball here, so. And this irritates the residents, because their paying um, is on the honor system right now, and the number of players can become very overwhelming. And yet, I don't know if the staff cares ever monitor to see if the fees collected equals the number of people who are really playing. So I think, I just think that the non-residents would be willing to pay for an increased fee to have a great indoor place to uh, exercise, to play pickleball or to walk in the summer. And obviously, if you wanted to make a monthly fee or a yearly fee, and they really um, were non-residents, they would probably enjoy that a small break over a daily fee. But uh, I think with a great facility, we should treat ourselves as if we are a great facility.
Thank you very much, the amount of thought and um, depth that you took there is valued by this council, I say that with confidence. Your email, um, I think everything you said, you might have added a few things, was in your email that you provided. If not, please um, send that, I can go back and listen to the recording too, but my request is that um, we're gonna be taking this up again to formally vote, so we can have, you know, advanced conversations that, that may be piggyback off of what we learned today. And um, I, I'll forward that email if it's, or one of us got to, um, I think other council members were on it, but maybe I was the, the only one. Um, I will forward it to our city clerk, and you can distribute it, but Ms. Rong, seriously, thank you very much, and thank you for serving on our Leisure Services Board. With that, I would like to take a break, but before we do, if we're ready, we can go ahead and vote this through. And, oh, we don't need to take any action?
We just need consensus.
Okay, consensus is, um.
Mayor, if I could ask, so, do you want me to raise those rates as we're talking about consensus and you guys wanna provide me a couple of figures that?
I can email you my thoughts, I think that we, this is a headbender, uh, for me, I do agree that the, the children is, are good, but it's, I would say if we take those points and you can put your recommendation with it, then next.
Okay.
You factory, you give your expertise, the council can weigh that.
Absolutely, because there's context in it all, right? The facility, obviously, over here, uh, the charges per hour. But because, you know, there, there's just a lot of context where, for example, let's just take this sport of pickleball. It's only a two-hour window, so it's not like you get to come and play pickleball all day. It's sections of time that are gonna be set for pickleball, because then we wanna do basketball, we wanna do, you know, so there's, there's context in, on, into everything, but by all means, uh, you know, so there's, there's context in, on, into everything, but by all means, uh, you know, we, from my end, I was trying to propose something very reasonable because I know a lot of the people that come, I hear the complaints even when we're asking people to pay two dollars, you think they're, you think they're digging into their pockets. And Molly used to hear when you were there, we hear it. So, uh, you know, like, like, uh, Ms. Rong said, people are trying to get away with not paying a buck sometimes. And luckily, pickleballers in particular, they, they self-regulate a lot, you know? We do, do count sporadically to make sure that everybody's there is paid, but it's hard because it's some pickleballers cover for each other. And, you know, it's just this game that, you know, we, if you ever come, we even have sandwich boards. You must check it, you must pay, you know? We used to never have to do that before, before pickleball. Because tennis players just came ready to pay, but pickleball is this new thing and, uh,
Yeah, it's exploding.
Yeah.
I, I'm all for setting the rates and then taking, um, like the YMCA, I think, Boys and Girls Club, economic hardship, if there's a simplified process for somebody to make a case that doesn't expose, that says, hey, um, I think this council could consider to say, hey, disabled and factoring those people that have legitimate reasons that they want to be healthy and exercise, we can, um, consider discounts or scholarships or sponsorships for kids who want to be involved, or even adults who just, you know, they want to go to the gym every day, seven dollars a day, that becomes expensive, or the membership's a little too much to shell out all at once. I think those are all good ideas, but I know how hard you worked on this and the research that went into it. Thank you very much. I really did appreciate all of the comparative analysis.
And, and it's hard, you know, because how, how do I put on there that they have, how many columns have I had, can I have for amenities that these places have, you know? I was trying to keep it relevant to what's kind of what we're offering, you know?
So we have consensus to move forward. I'll email you. I mean, you, if I don't send it, then that's not your problem. Ball's in my court to send that. Uh, I, I'll definitely send the email to our city clerk, everyone, but my thoughts on it and council can do the same, I think. And we don't need to take action. I think you have consensus to move forward with the resolution, council. We're good?
Yes.
With that, I've got a note. Um, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Um, and then when we come back, we will go ahead and take up that MRC add-on item, just to, and that'll give you some time to give it a skim if you want. But with that, we'll meet back here at eight twenty-three. Eight twenty-three, thank you. Wow, different room. Okay. For all. Ah. Oh, that's sweet. All right, little over, but we're going to go ahead and get started here. We are ready, um, council. Looks like we're all ready. At this time, upon request, the add-on agenda item to place it up, and, I'm sorry, we have to, um, take up this public hearing item first, excuse me, uh, which is, um, ordinance number O two twenty twenty-one, and with that, our city attorney, who is not here, I just noticed.
He's, he's in the hallway.
Okay.
We, we can read it. I'll take care of you like, yeah, I'll read it.
We're on item number eight, for those of you, um, listen, but, um, yeah, city manager, if you want to read it, that'd be helpful.
Ordinance number O two twenty-two, establishing election procedure under chapter twenty-six of the city code to be utilized to conduct special elections of the electors of the city cape, to fill city code, uh, city council vacancies that may occur in the future as a result of one or more council members filing a notice of resignation with a prospective effective date to run for a different office in accordance with Florida's resign-to-run law in instances where there is an intervening general city election, providing that any such special election shall occur at the same time as the regularly scheduled intervening general election in accordance with the city charter and city code, providing for conflicts of probility incorporation into the code and an effective date. This is the first reading. Mayor, as you may recall, the last, um, mayoral election, we had, uh, two council members resign to run. Uh, that triggered a requirement for an emergency meeting with the council to schedule, uh, special election to fill the vacancies. And, uh, a little bit of running around we had to do to make that happen. Um, looking back, city attorney and I talked about it, we realized that happened six years previously for the mayoral election, and we thought, well, if this is the way council wants to do this, why don't we just put it in the code this way so we don't have to run around next time? What it effectively does is puts, uh, the, puts it in the voter's hands every time there's a resign to run with an intervening general election. Um, obviously, this doesn't, doesn't touch where, say, a council member moves, or a council member were to die in office or something, there's still an appointment required for that. This is specifically for resigning to run, um, for another office and the vacancies created by that. This also addresses if a council member were to resign to run for another office, say, it wasn't the mayor, it might be state legislature or county commissioner or something else. This addresses all of that. Anthony, how'd they do? Okay? Mayor.
Watch out, Anthony. Awesome. Thank you very much. With that, this is a public hearing item. Uh, any questions for staff on this council before we go to the public?
Yeah, I'd like to know if, um, I didn't read in there whether it was a time requirement to resign.
Yes, there is, there is a time provided. Yeah, there's a statutory time period, um, under the resign-to-run law that, um, um, an incumbent would have to resign by. So that's, when, when you, when, when, under the resign-to-run law, the resignation can be effective immediately if they choose to leave their current office, or alternatively, it could be a prospective effective date on the resignation sometime in the future. And that's the situation that, um, triggered the intervening general election because when, when, when a, when a council member resigns to run for mayor, at least, they have to resign prior to qualifying for that next general election.
Okay.
So with a prospective effective date, there is now the anticipation that there will be a vacancy when that council member leaves office. And if, it, it, it allows the clerk's office to, um, qualify people to run to fill the vacancy rather than wait until the vacancy occurs, because under the resign-to-run law, the vacancy is effective when the council member actually leaves office. Um, it's not when they announce that they're going to resign. That, that's the nuance. So under, under general, under Florida case law, um, there's supporting, significant supporting case law by the Florida Supreme Court that would authorize the city council to call for a special election rather than wait for the vacancy to occur, and then the council And then the council would be forced to make an appointment rather than let the voters decide who's gonna fill the vacancy. So this would codify the procedure that the city council has successfully used on two prior mayoral elections.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilmember Willis, good. Councilmember Davis, good. Councilmember Raymond, Mayor Pro Tim, good. Yes, and I, uh, city clerk's office, as our qualifying officer, I think to echo what our city attorney said, it's ten days prior to the qualifying period. And man, you'll check your calendar four times on that one, but your business days count. But I did it to answer your question and, and you. And so, and then you, the perspective date is after the fact that it's irrevocable, right? Because candidate or elected officials could play games, right? You say, I'm running for office and I like that it's irrevocable. It puts a finality to it. Tells you is, like, that's why it justifies the vacancy. And I think the case law supports it. It's like the fact that it's irrevocable. Go ahead and run your election, put it in the people's hands. There's nothing else. They're essentially gone on this date. So, um, I think it's a good thing. Any other questions before we go to public? Public hearing item. Deputy City Clerk, do you have anything? I don't have any cards on this item. Making sure no one forgot to put one in. Seeing none. Public hearings closed. Back to this council. Any more debate?
Nope.
Discussion?
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number O two two zero two-two on the first reading.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Callum, second by Councilmember Raymond. Council, anything else? Good. All right. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis, Mayor Pro Tim Callum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Ordinance O two twenty twenty-one passes on first reading. Now we move on for items of discussion, the one that I jumped. Um, thank this council for allowing me to add on the agenda item at the top of the stack here. Um, this is the one that we were handed out. I understand if you didn't get a chance to really study this, but, um, in general. I, I'll give a, a brief explanation to it. Make sure everyone has the Marine Resource Council Agenda Add-on Item. It's copies. Should have enough for to go around. So, thank you for your patience here. The, um. My goal is, is to create a, awareness tonight on, on this opportunity and let you know and also use this as an opportunity. So I, I attended the Low Impact Development. Um, event, learned a lot. Zach was there as well. Um, many other, uh, folks from the city. And this issue is not. Uh, there's organizations working, but, uh, the Marine Resources Council located right here in, uh, Brevard County. Has done a fantastic job of taking an issue with the lagoon. That is complex with a lot of science and breaking it down to a tangible thing that I can explain to my. The sixth grader. Um, they use a report card, as we've all seen, something we've been, um. Very, uh, comfortable with our whole life, A through F. And, uh, this, last year, we had F minus. And, uh, this year, we created, as I said, a new grade. I think it's called F minus minus. For this area, but not only do they create a simple data-backed, quantifiable. Uh, way to understand and to start the conversation on turbidity, phosphorus levels, nitrogen levels. Uh, solinity, these are the, 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 the main core ingredients that we can measure. Um. Is that they, they help this community, um, start that conversation. And one of the big things that we talked about. Was, um, creating awareness and education. I had a chance to talk with Zach and he, and he said. Um, this gets the conversation go and they produce that report card. They, um, distribute it, I think. Really on private charitable donations or nonprofit organization. And I've been, um, very thankful for their work. And not just the lagoon on many different efforts. Their lobbying efforts in, uh, with Dr. Lisa up in, uh, Tallahassee. Coordinating with, um, all entities and stakeholders to make sure that we've got an educated person on the lagoon for the whole state of Florida, right here in Brevard County. Um, and I'm excited to see everything they've got going on. To lead that, Monday, um, we've got a, uh, the report card. I don't know if we're gonna be the first physical learning session. Actually, Steve's here and if he wants, he can come up and give a, a little, uh. Little bit more to add on to this, fill in the gaps where I missed. But if we can get, uh, invite citizens out to come to Monday, we're gonna be holding right here in the council chambers. Zach, um, will be here. Uh, Dr. Lisa, I think Steve will be here and will promote it. And they're gonna hand out the report card and distribute it to all the citizens here. And we can talk about it. And that's an opportunity to let our citizens know what we're doing. Share the idea of putting the stormwater drain under the promenade. I mean, that directly relates to this. And, um, I think I want to invite some of those people who are experiencing the flood to, to talk about things that we can, we can do to help because that's the other concern. And so with that. Um, the MRC works hard, uh, going out in the community and they've started a new program called, uh, the Friends of the Lagoon. And I'm gonna just pause there. Steve, if you don't mind, would you mind coming up and giving a quick overview of the. Friends of the Lagoon and what the goal is? And I don't know if we're still the first opportunity, but please, this is Steve Sharkey, everyone.
Thank you so much, uh, for having me here. And, uh, thank you for attending the Low Impact Development Conference and the other city attendees. Um, and I was really encouraged to hear a lot of what I heard today. Um, and we're excited to present the report card, uh, Monday. Has everyone received a report card? Okay, um. So, uh, we based this after the Chesapeake Bay report card. So they had six states rally behind their report card. In a united effort to improve the water quality of the bay. And that's what we're trying to mimic that effort, effort here on the lagoon. We have five counties. That we're really trying to rally and empower. And this is that tool that we can use as a spear to move the chains forward to guide us. Um, this is Florida State Water Management District data, a hundred percent of Florida State data. And using their, uh. Targets of health, we're able to produce a grade. And that's how we create this. And unfortunately, it is, it is bad news, but, uh, but this is our fourth. Report card. And I'm a native and I knew that the water quality was not good. And I was surprised to learn how awful it, it is. And, uh, we can use this as, uh, a tool to hold ourselves accountable. And to guide us, uh, forward with the restoration and the policy needed to reverse the negative impact that we've had historically on the water quality. And the challenges, the MRC is committed to produce this each year, um, to serve as that tool and that guide. Um, and that's always the challenge is right now, we have a relatively small group of stakeholders, individuals, uh, family foundations. Uh, companies and a ton of small, uh, donors that this is a, this is a private, uh, donor-funded project. And so we're, we're seeking, uh, stakeholders who believe in the report, who see the potential that it can help, uh. Promote as far as this is an education tool to guide us forward. And, uh, so it's a, it's a advocacy group. And each year, we're gonna commit to send this to the state, every senator and representative. We're gonna send a team there to educate them because we are gonna need a lot of help from the state as well as the local communities to save our lagoon. And, uh, we, we need to stamp as many names on this and as many networks as possible, uh, so that people are aware of it. To serve as, uh, communication partners and, and funding partners. So we just ask people if they believe in this, uh, as a tool to help us. That, uh, they put their money where their mouth is and, uh, the minimum, uh, is a thousand dollars. Right now, any donor who contributes to MRC. Become at a thousand dollar level, uh, or more becomes a friend of the lagoon. So the first thousand dollars of every donation, you are a stakeholder now of this report and you are helping. Fuel this into the future. So each year, the goal, the goal is to expand the data set. Expand the amount of tributaries in the data. So right now, there's only ten tributaries. We would love to add more, to add fisheries data, to add watershed data, to add land use data. So we can get the full picture of, you know, how do we repair this, this water body if you don't have all the data easily accessible for the public to understand? And like the mayor was saying, this is pretty easy to understand is, we're gonna need everybody's help to turn this F into a D. You know, we don't want, you know, this is, this is not a good highlight for the Space Coast, the big F and the big red picture. And that's, our goal is to, to turn it green. Um, and so we need help with that. Um, so Friends of the Lagoon would be stakeholders of this document. And would help us, uh, further the distribution and expand the data set. And, uh, that's the short of it. And, uh, we do hope, uh, you will attend Monday's outreach event with Dr. Lisa Soto, the executive director. Who, uh, is the, uh, publisher of this. She's the author, along with Applied Ecology. And we have to thank the, uh, state water management districts for providing the data and all the donors. But she will be here Monday at six P M. in this room. And it will be, uh, simulcast through a live, live webinar as well. And, uh, the more people that we can, the more ears and eyes we can get. This document in front of, uh, the better chance we'll have in, in quickly restoring our lagoon. So, thank you. Any, any questions?
Thank you. Yes, I might have some questions. And so to recap, the opportunity is that. You're getting the, you're doing what I think we're weak at, is getting the science and data and pushing it out. And you're seeking partners. Private businesses, cities, organizations to say, we, we'll get behind you because. Going to Tallahassee, getting in front of every senator and every representative can provide great impact to this area. We've seen it happen in the past in some areas. And so. If I understand, it's something for us to partner on with a communications partner, what you're saying, which sounds like we're doing. And then the financial contribution is the, a thousand dollar minimum. Um, to be a, a friend of the lagoon. And has any other cities at this point donated? Or would we be, because I think when you reached out. It was like that inertia conversation.
You would be the first, the city of Cape Canaveral would be the first official friend of the lagoon sponsor of the Indian River Lagoon Report Card.
We need to be number one.
And I told, when he reached out about, I said, I want to talk to the city manager and I, it was, it was a crazy month with the stuff we've been doing. And, and I sent it over. And so in fairness to him with the budget and considering he hasn't had a chance to even deep dive. But I did talk with Zach a little bit more in depth, but I said one thing. And I'll say it now that we're together is, this council has been very unified on lagoon efforts and stormwater, but.
I just wanted to say, I heard Lisa last night at Space Coast League of Cities, and we did pass a resolution, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero one. And it's a resolution, I have to read this, a result, because I never get a chance to give my report. A resolution of the Space Coast League of Cities and Corporation, a Florida not-for-profit corporation making findings commencing. The Florida Tech Restore Lagoon Inflow Research Project for its efforts to better the health of the Indian River Lagoon, providing for an effective date. And this went directly to Senator Mayfield to present in Tallahassee. So I just wanted to tell you, we were on it last night. And Lisa Soto has been giving a report every month. So we're really up on the, um, health of the Indian River Lagoon. But I have one question. I have to ask. I live on the Banana River. And to me and my husband, we're like ten feet. It looks like it's clearing up. A section like from here to the clock, for example. Am I crazy or what? But it looks clear. And it didn't for a long time. But a section of it is clear. So. We both commented at the same time, we said, it does, we can see the bottom in some spot. So I'm really. Grateful that, you know, it seems as though efforts are working. And I, I am hopeful. I'm optimistic anyway. Very optimistic. So we just need to keep going. And yes, uh, if you want a motion, I'm ready to make a motion.
One, I want to make sure the other councilmembers have comments. The question will be, does that stay clear through those warm summer months with the rain and the allergy blooms, right? Because in the wintertime, you, it'll be gin clear, I mean crystal. But like, correct me if I'm wrong, you get dog days of summer, that's when it, those blooms are likely, right?
There is a seasonality to the water clarity. Um, but, uh, we have, there's a lot of work that is being done. And, uh, we do commend all the players. There's a huge effort happening. And, uh, but yes, there is some seasonality to the water clearing up. When the storms die down and the winds die down, uh, the lagoon does look clear. And then we come into the rainy season. And then we all know what happens. And.
And when the world went on lockdown or shut down with COVID, one of the things is you didn't see anybody out and they're like, the lagoon's clearing up, you know, a little. But I don't know if there was any true data or science to that, but that's. Councilmember Davis?
Oh, no, I was gonna say it was clear. I live on, on the river as well. And you could actually see the bottom when people shut down.
Now we just gotta get grass to grow in the Banana River. That's always been the challenge.
Yeah, that's gonna be our focus moving forward is sea grass. And, uh. Like the Low Impact Development Conference, MRC is working on a sea grass assembly to address. What is preventing sea grass from growing and what is killing sea grass? And, uh, and then we'll follow that up with the next Low Impact Development Conference follow-up. So, uh, we'll, we'll be really busy the next, uh, six to twelve months.
Well, I'll sit the next one out if one of, another council member goes, or we'll all go. How about that? And if we can make it, it, it was excellent.
Yeah, the, uh, the conference, uh, was a great opportunity. So I'm glad for those who've got to experience it. And, uh, the next, uh, conference might be a little bit more targeted. Uh, towards actually changing code, building codes, because sometimes the, the codes don't allow for low impact development. And, uh, the University of Florida has created a, a tool, a sort of tutorial to help cities. Go through their code books and make the changes that would be necessary to be even able to adopt low impact development ordinances. Um, so we're really excited about that. And, uh, I don't have a date yet, but you'll, you're on the, the, the shortlist by attending the LID conference.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Jim Callum, any comments from you?
No, I think that we should definitely, um, make a donation. I second, um, Angela's motion.
I wanted to just. Our city manager, if you don't mind, real fast, anything that, from the budgetary standpoint and thoughts on this, you know, if, if you see we're being okay?
I, I think this is an important cause and we should support it. I, I wholeheartedly support it. We'll find a way. You could, assuming this passes at the vote time, if you could coordinate with Mr. Dickey back there with any invoicing. And I'll look forward to seeing City Cape Canaveral on the top of the list of donors in any of your promotional material.
Great. Um. If you don't mind, the motion again, Councilmember Raymond, so I got it. And then.
My move that Cape Canaveral should be the first to be friends of the Indian River Lagoon by donating the thousand dollars.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Raymond and a second by Councilmember Davis. Any other discussion, council? Would you like to? I think we've done the motion. They. We can, I can answer your question, yes. Um, you can.
No, I, I, I think a thousand's good this year. I've just, you know, for our first time.
It's an online, like, so if there's a desire to continue, I think we could, so.
Okay.
But I think. Okay. City Clerk, did you hear the motion? Clear to?
Yeah.
Okay, great. With that, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis, Mayor Pro Tim Callum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Motion passes five oh to become friends of the lagoon. Thank you very much.
Thank you to the council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We appreciate y'all. Okay, with that, thank you, council. We are now on to item number nine, establishing residency requirement for candidates seeking to qualify to run in city council elections. Mister City Manager, if you wouldn't mind giving us, oh, is that, was this an overview of this? Oh, you want me, okay, you want me to? That for you think is best, uh, yes. That for you think is best, God, yes.
I'd be happy, I mean, the city clerk's office, you know, is the department responsible for the agenda item, but um, the, the clerk's office pulled together some historical information regarding uh, resident, whether, what, the residency qualification for candidates that want to run for city council. Uh, for whatever reason, the current city charter does not have a residency requirement. Uh, what I mean by a residency requirement, um, many municipalities, as indicated in, in the staff information, uh, require candidates that want to run for the city council to at least reside within their city for a certain period of time prior to qualification. So the city at one point had a residency uh, requirement in its charter, also had a freeholder requirement in, in the city, city charter. And in 1989, um, the city realized that the freeholder requirement is obviously clearly unconstitutional. Um, and as well considered a two-year residency requirement and felt that that was unlawful. And based on the city charter, uh, actually, based on Florida law, which says that if a charter provision has been declared unconstitutional or invalid, uh, the city council had the authority to amend its city charter. So in 1989, the city council did amend its charter and repealed residency requirement and the freeholder requirement. And it has not existed since um, 1989. Um, so uh, there is significant case law regarding residency requirements. If the council were inclined to um, suggest to the voters, that are recommended to the voters, that there be a residency requirement, I would recommend no more than one year. Um, because I think the case law um, is pretty, pretty clear that um, two years is, is unreasonable and would be declared invalid. Uh, one year seems to be a relative safe harbor based on case law. Uh, six months as well is, is, you, you might see in some of the communities. So um, the clerk's office after this last election brought all this to light. Uh, felt that the city council should at least consider the fact that a residency requirement does not, uh, does not exist in the current charter. If the council was inclined to have the voters consider this, um, a, you know, an ordinance would have to be prepared, uh, um, holding a referendum at, at the next general election or whatever general election you choose to hold the referendum. And the voters would have a say on whether or not um, a residency requirement should be incorporated into the charter or not. So I'd be happy to answer any specific questions, but looking at the research, I mean, I love history and um, Daniel and Mia pulled up the history. I had not known that uh, this happened in 1989. It's an interesting factoid. At the very least, uh, back of your head.
That is fascinating. Just to clarify or repeat back, the residency requirement is for a candidate.
For candidate.
No, I wanna, over communicate. We've always had to be residents to be on council, but under the old rule, you could live in Merritt Island, run for Cape Canaveral City Council. And as long as you pack up your bags and you're a resident here on.
There you go, it's one of them.
Or whenever, that's another debate. When's the first day? Maybe it's not a debate at all for you, but um, yes, that you could do that. And I think that's how state, how the legislature is, because you see candidates now running and they go, well, if I win, I'm gonna move. And I'm like, okay, interesting.
The county, I'm pretty sure the county commission as well, has the same constitutional standard. Because that's in the Florida constitution, they have to be residents um, within the, when, within the district or county at the time they take office.
But not as a candidate.
But not, not as a candidate to qualify. Now, that's the way it is right now in Cape Canaveral.
Right.
You have to be a resident to serve on the city council, but not to qualify to run for city council.
Yes. So just my um, Mia is our qualifying officer. My concern, I share this thought, is that the process for her, for our city clerk's office, excuse me, and Daniel helps with it too, tremendous, is that they have a clear process. Because it can be difficult to prove residency over time. Residency, or this, so I see you reasoning.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony, but what happens is if somebody were to be elected to council, then it, it's on you guys. Because right at that moment, in, in the charter, it says council members must be residents. So then that forces you to decide, well, actually, it would force you to go through a whole process to maybe remove that person.
So you're saying that the adminis, it's not an administrative, like when, when we fill out our paperwork, you are simply processing, not interpreting context and making discretion.
Like I've told all of you, the city clerk is the qualifying officer, but we're not the police. So we take in your, your reports and we make sure that it's filled out. And if there's anything missing, we'll say, you forgot to fill this in, you forgot to fill this in. But we're not there to tell you how to fill your report, do your math, and advise you. Because then that could appear as if we're trying to help you manage your campaign. So it's the electorate's job to pay attention. And then if somebody gets, at this moment, if they were elected and got on council, then it would be your job to make sure that that person is a resident of the city.
So that doesn't change the fact that it's still difficult sometimes to prove residency over time. And she just basically said the burden's on us now. Um, but the, the, the challenge is, is that to me, you know, somebody goes through a whole campaign and then you're sitting up here with this elected official. I would like to have some sort of, maybe it's just a form, right? And that, that you're not, the format says by checking this box, I I'll hurt you, Anthony, would word it, I
Affirm.
Affirm that, that I have been a resident for 12 months. And that would be a better.
You have your voter registration card also. And that indicates where you're voting.
I know people that are registered to vote in Cape Canaveral right now that do not live in Cape Canaveral. They move and they don't change their voter. Um, now, the, in, 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 it's totally possible. I, I've seen, I mean, utility bills are in other people's names, right? They're not in their name. Um, driver's license, I don't discriminate, I mean, do you have to have a driver's license to, to represent your community? I don't know, but I think the, the evidence, there should be, and, right, we could use it.
I think you're, no, I think, I think you're on the right, I think you're on the right track. Because it is an evidentiary s, issue. So you have to take it in chunks. There's qualifying a candidate to run for city council. And um, a candidate that has been elected and is serving on the city council, and that, and an actual council member. The city council is the judge of its qualifications of its members once you all take your oath and you're on the city council. Hypothetically, if a council member lost their um, their charter resident, their residency in the city and is no longer an elector of the city, the, the city council can uh, examine the qualifications of one of its members. Okay? Um, and it would be based on the totality of the evidence. And there's a bunch of different things that courts look at to prove residency. So that's once a council member is elected and is serving. The qualification of a candidate to run for city council is a slightly different issue. Um, the, the candidate would have to sign qualifying papers. Generally, there's an affidavit of residency. They typically provide some form, basic form, like a license or a voter registration card to at least on its face, show, show residency. And then the clerk accepts the, the qualification package. Now, the clerk's responsibility is clear under Florida law. It's a ministerial duty. They just, she just takes the paperwork in, sees if it ticks the box. She doesn't examine the veracity of what's in, in qualification packages that's submitted by candidates. That is for a court to examine. The, the case law is very clear on that point. In my opinion, having been through this issue several times in my career, um, more than, you know, probably I want to go through, but it, it happens. So, so, yeah, so, so the question becomes, if somebody is questioning a candidate's uh, qualification, their residency, then typically it's another candidate that calls that into question. So you, you, um, another candidate is one party that would have standing to challenge another candidate's qualifications while they're running for office. Not a coun, no, no, not counting.
Not saying, hey, you, we five oh.
No, it, it would be, it would come from most likely another candidate, not, not the city council challenging some, some other candidates trying to run to, to serve on the council. It's typically another candidate.
And I didn't interrupt my questions, though, that if we, if we are, if we govern, you said we govern ourselves once we're members. We can, we have the ability to govern, govern candidates. So we're all sitting up here, we have an election coming up in November, and we say, hey, who's this Joe Smith? And Councilmember Raymond goes, he just moved in yesterday. He lives next door to me. He's from Michigan, right? I mean, can we take action at that point?
Um, I think, now, the law, there, there, in my, in my, my research this thing extensively and several occasions, I am not aware of any Florida case that a city council can challenge the residency of a candidate running for city council. If all the case law on standing on that issue, um, there's another candidate um, that is challenging the residency of the, of the, of the other candidate.
Say, Joe Smith, whatever gets elected, he signs the affidavit paper, whatever, to state that he is a resident. He's elected, he's on council, we find out, he qualified that. Is it, it's council's duty at that time to, to vote, to have him off?
Well, there's another, there's a, yeah, there's a line of case law on that, that um, you're gonna challenge the qualifications of a candidate running for office, you best do it before the election.
Where do you challenge?
Circuit court. It's a quo warrant, oh, action.
We've all been in elections and we've all, you know, you deal with so much and there's always this other candidate thought, right? And things, and from my, like, the challenging process is so long, it never even makes sense to even challenge. And so I like Councilmember Davis's questions, like, oh.
What happens if they do?
But once they get on, you actually have the time. Because you're usually in a 90-day window. And it's like, by the time the court's get it, this person's on.
Well, the courts, I mean, frankly, the courts, um, in my experience, it may not happen in all cases, do their best to expedite the, and have an evidentiary hearing before, uh, before the election. I've also seen it become political campaign issues as well. Um, but in terms of standing, I think the case law's pretty clear. If you're gonna challenge somebody's qualifications to run, you best do it before the election. Once there, once somebody's elected, you have your own residency requirements, right? And elector requirements. If you lose that while you're serving on the council, then the council is the judge of its qualification of its members, not candidates, but its members, which means you're serving. And that's, and that's your, you judge your own. So if this, if this is back, back up, if the city were to establish um, a residency requirement um, for candidates, then, you know, there would be some qualification papers that somebody would have to sign. Um, citizens would be able to examine, council members, other candidates would be able to examine that. If anybody questions it, um, it's subject to um, an action, an injunctive action, injunction action in circuit court. Um, it's subject to campaign issues and um, and go, it goes from there. Um, but it's a, it's a very common, very common um, requirement for mun, for municipal candidates, as the staff report indicates.
Yeah, and I think that the, the one thing that is that a residency requirement, even if it doesn't pan out in court or, you know, you get injunctive relief or, you know, smear camp, whatever, it's effective, just in case, you know, to me, the filter, just that existence of, you know, signing an affidavit, I think, has an, it's a, it, it's effective. The question of whether we want it or not is the, I think, the decision today. I would just, on the process. And one other thing on residencies, and so this is tied to specifically, I've seen where cities write, um, must be a resident for a year.
That's right.
Well, guess what? I was a resident for a year from 1992 to 1993 in this city, right? And so I think you should say must be, just similar to qualifying, I think that to be prior to qualifying, 12 consecutive, that's another thing. I lived here six months, I moved away for four months, I moved here six months, I'm, I'm at a year. Right? And it's like, so being very specific with our intent there.
That's the standard we hold for board members. They have to be, right, Anthony?
Um.
Not all board members have.
Resident.
Yes. It's on the application.
But just, but is it in our, it's in our code?
I think it's under the Uniform Board Ordinance.
Yeah.
I've seen it. But what is it specific? Does it say consecutive from?
I believe, I believe it does.
Because if you, if you stay, if you want to run for office bad enough and you stare at some of these rules long enough, you start to see some wacky things people justify, living, you know, miles from their district. And like, oh, it says this. And so this is our opportunity to be very explicit.
Yeah. If, if we.
If we want it.
Mayor, may I say something? If we, this out to the voters in a referendum, then they'll be aware of it. You know, what I'm saying is for future reference. It's right out there. So they will be aware of this, residents who are interested in running for city council.
I have a question, and I'm not sure if city manager or who can answer this. We've talked about different ways of having to prove that you are qualified, that you have the residency requirements. Is that something that this council would have to decide on what paperwork is required? Or is that by Florida, who, who, it's something we don't have to decide? It would be automatic?
That's something, um.
We haven't gotten that.
Supervisor of elections.
Yeah.
Board of elections, no.
The, um, you know, it, it's gonna be based on the totality of the evidence that the courts will examine whatever they, whatever the court deems relevant um, to establish or not, or, or to contest somebody's residence, the court will determine relevancy. And there's some standard, you know, stuff like the um, you know, the, where you're registered to vote, uh, where your driver's license address, your utility bills, um, you know, down to surveillance. Um, I mean, it gets that, you can get that detailed. I mean, but the documentation, right? Um.
Nothing that we'd be required to, to.
No, typically the qualification papers um, is an affidavit. And you're showing, you know, a driver's license or some sort of proof of residency as a, at a, at a, at a base level that at least, um, you know, on paper, you know, it provides, you know, proof of residency. But, you know, that's just one aspect of it. It could get far more involved in contesting whatever paper that they, they provide. And to go to the mayor's point about being specific, you know, that, a lot of communities have residency requirements, very few communities have domicile requirements. Um, there's a distinction in Florida law between domicile and residency. Um, somebody can have multiple residences. Um, somebody can have multiple residency residences. Um, but you can only have one domicile, and this case law, you know. About the distinction between the two, domicile is where you always, kind of in generally, it's where you intend. To always go back to is basically home base, right? So, there's another standard, um, domicile residency, Cocoa has domicile. Um, they used to have residency, over twenty years ago, they wanted more, they wanted domicile. So, Cocoa was, was, I think, one of the few cities in, in Brevard County that has a more stringent, you know, domicile requirement. Yeah, well, we've had a few issues there. To contend with from time to time in other cities, too.
Yeah. I think registered to vote, I, I, to me, just thinking out loud, despite signing. In front of, you know, a notary.
Yeah.
Is. If, if they're going to. Fraudulently put, you know, sign something that they don't. They know is not true, then I think they're willing to bend the proof to. I mean, they're willing to go to that an extra level and redact a phone bill or Photoshop, or, I mean, we live in a time now where. They print the driver's license, and so I'm like, the bad actors are gonna just be the bad actors, and so, I don't know how I feel about. Showing more than maybe, but, like voter registration then shows party, and we're a nonpartisan election. So I know we can redact, but to me, it would just be, you would just sign, that would be enough. But opposed to showing that.
Any, anybody that's running for office is going to be known by the people around them, or should be. But they should be. Were they elected?
But still, I know they're not elected, but when, when. When candidates get in that are not qualified, it put, it strains our city clerk's office, it strains our. It strains everybody running for sure, and I think.
Well, I feel, I feel like the residents of Cape Canaveral deserve candidates who have domicile. In Cape Canaveral. I, I think it gives residents a chance to get to know people, observe them in daily life. And see what kind of character they are. So, I would be all in support of domicile twelve months prior. For qualifying previous twelve, previous twelve months. Well, the.
With the consecutive, because it's like, well, you left for a month.
Well, no, the, the, maintain a domicile, maintain domicile in Cape Canaveral for. The preceding twelve months of the qualifying period. So, so basically. Oh, yeah, 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 and, and by the voters voting on it, they're, they're going to be, they're gonna be watching. Their, their, their curiosity is going to be piqued at the next election, if there's somebody there that, that they don't know. So, I mean, if qualifying period, just to throw a date out there, is August first, then it, it should be maintaining domicile. In Cape Canaveral for the prior twelve months from August first to. No, Ju- July, well, to, yeah, yeah, the previous twelve months, whatever, whatever the calendar is. So, no, it is backwards, you know, calendar's marching forward on me, so.
How, as far as the ballot language goes, I mean, tonight, we're just talking about it. Can you walk us through and just say, we like it, we give you some work product that you can work with? What are the next steps, two readings?
Yeah, there's gonna be two readings of an, of an ordinance, let me walk you through the process. Um, the, um, Apple and tax exemption. We would have an ordinance, we'd have two, two readings of the ordinance, public hearings. Um, the ordinance would contain the proposed amendment text for the charter, right? So the actual, it's like writing city code, right, but it's gonna be writing a city charter provision. And then there's an art form, um, you have to have a title for the ref, you have to prepare the referendum ballot. And there's an art form to that, um, fifteen, maximum fifteen words for the title. Maximum, uh, seventy-five words for the actual, uh, question. Right, it's like a tweet, a little longer than a tweet on the, on the question, but. And you have to be pretty precise with the, with the quest, the referendum question, because referendum questions can be challenged as, as being misleading. And courts will invalidate a misleading, uh, ballot question, so there needs to be. A lot, it has to be real consistency between the text language. That you're proposing in the charter amendment and the actual question, so you're not misleading the public on the vote. So there's an art form and tying all of that. I mean, having been through referendum litigation on that aspect as well, um. That gets pretty, that could be pretty dicey, because you talk about nitpicking language.
Oh, my, I've seen the FPL and the solar.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, happens all, all the time.
In the Supreme Court.
Yep, I'm just the smallest little, you didn't disclose what in this, in this ballot question that was misleading? Because it has a chain reaction, a fact that the voters weren't apprised of, so you gotta be precise.
So hearing tonight, domicile twelve months, I don't want to put you on the spot, but can you give me a general idea of how the ballot would look? This is ultimately.
Yeah. I mean, you'd have, you'd have a title that, that says, um, something like, um, you know, establishing a domicile. For candidates running for city council, shall, shall, uh, the city charter be amended? To require candidates running for city council to maintain a domicile at these, say, twelve months preceding. Uh, qualification for office, I'm going off the top of my head, don't, don't hold me to that. Yes or no, yes or no, and it, and you can't, you can't say maybe, you can't say yes, but subject to. Florida law requires a straight up yes or no to a, to a referendum question.
Okay, it's sixty percent is required to pass referendum?
Fifty plus one.
That's state con- state constitution requires.
Charter, charter amendment requires majority vote.
So fifty plus one.
Yeah.
And then at that point, it, it's done, we don't have to bring it back and.
Yeah, we send it off to mun- muni code, and muni code changes the charter, and it shows up timeline.
And what is the timeline to get it on this ballot? That happens closing.
Probably August.
Yeah.
August, September, maybe August. Well, it would not apply to this election.
Yeah.
Coming up in twenty twenty-two, it would have to be, effective date would be twenty twenty-three, um, at the very earliest.
Oh, so it wouldn't, okay, we're not talking about this.
No, the question could be posed this November, effective twenty twenty-three. You can't, you can't, yeah, run, you can't make it effective concurrent with this year's. Gotcha, right, but no, you're not gonna be able to retroactively apply that, so it'll be prospective only.
Um, domicile, not a word that I've used a lot. And, and that's why would the, would people need the.
I haven't.
This time I went from the ballot language, like, domicile.
They can look it up on their phone.
Sure.
Well, that would be, well, yeah, I would, um, if you were gonna go down that route, I can certainly give you a, a legal memo on that. Um, so you can understand the distinctions, um, it would be, um. The case law on that would be clearly articulated in the recitals of the ordinance would be readily available. For anyone that wanted to examine, um, you know, the source of the referendum to educate themselves. Um, we, I'd have to play around with the question to see how it could be worded. You know, you use the word domicile, but whether we could, you know, add a little bit, something in there. And to the question, I'd have to examine that, but it would clearly, it would be articulated in the ordinance. And any of the information that you promulgated to the, to, to, to the voters to educate. Clearly articulate what domicile is versus residency.
Okay. So what do we think, thank you very much.
And if, and, and just so you know, if you went one way and you decided you wanna, ah, well, maybe we'll go residency or vice versa. You'd have that information, that would be a, a very easy tweak to make. Um, after the ordinance was prepared and you, it was presented to you. After you examined it, you could easily, you can easily change that.
Okay, that's not substantial change that, okay.
No, yeah, no, it would be, it would be a substantial, it would be a substantial change, maybe between first and second reading, but. I'm talking about presenting the item to you. You know, if, if you, if you were, if you were leaning one way. And you asked me to prepare the ordinance, and I presented it to you and say, eh, second thought, we wanna go, go the other way, that would be. Easy to, to fix, once, once the ordinance gets advertised. Um, it would not, because that, in my opinion, would be a substantial change to go from domicile to residency or residency to domicile. After the ordinance has been advertised for, for second reading.
Does this have to pass with fifty-one percent of the residents?
Fifty percent plus one.
Of the residents?
Fifty percent. Majority vote, yeah, majority, majority vote, yep.
Four thousand three hundred sixty-three. No, but it's fifty of the voters who show up, of who cast a ballot, which we. Um, okay, any other discussion, um, I think council, a staff is looking for direction here, is that correct? I think we have a, a consensus that. Twelve month domicile, right?
That's, that's what I would prefer.
And we can set this baby off on its journey. Thank you, all right, with that.
Yes. I would like to ask if we could, I know Stu has been here patiently waiting. And I, I know he has a comment to say on, on an issue here, could we skip to eleven? And then let him go home?
Is it, I.
Okay.
Well. Do we, um, are you talking about, uh, it, item number eleven, we just took up number nine. You're saying, do we want to take up item number eleven before ten?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I don't think anyone's necessarily here for number ten right now. I don't have cards for number ten, but. Okay, yep, so I, I think that's a great idea, I think.
Okay.
Yep, so if council's okay, we'll, we'll take up item number eleven next, good? Okay. We don't need to vote on that, do we, to move agenda item? We just.
No, you can be simple right now.
Okay, they're just discussion items, all right, so item number eleven is a discussion on workshop prior to demolishing the building. For the promenade, also known as the civic hub, um, this is simple, uh, to me, is that. Uh, we've made a decision, uh, the majority of the council has voted to acquire the property. The intent was to, uh, do the promenade, the civic hub. And the request is, before we, um, go through. The, the process to do that, which would require demolishing the building, let's, um, have a workshop. Get the citizens involved, I know this was a divided issue, it was a three-two vote, it was controversial. We, we can put the, the, the acquisition behind us, it's final, but before we. The, the two scenarios are, uh, is promenade goes exactly as planned, and we get validation from the community. Which is a great feeling, or there are small changes, we've already heard some ideas from Councilmember Willis about the stormwater underneath. That's an adjustment to the plan, and we got ten thousand people out there with other ideas. And so what does the promenade look like, getting them involved before the design phase, shaping it? Getting the unity, which I know is very important, um, behind this project. Or exploring other alternatives, and I think that this council has said workshops are a good thing. That we want to do workshops, this is an opportunity to do it, and that is my request.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to move to dispense of this discussion item, since I believe it's a moot point. We've already directed the staff to go ahead on this project, we cannot undirect them. So I would like to move that this is a moot point.
What is your motion?
I, I would like to move that to dispense of this discussion item, since it's a moot point.
So you're making.
I'm making a motion to dispense of this discussion item.
Okay, is, is that.
Do I hear a second?
Is that city attorney, that the proper terminology, I mean, I get it, I don't need that fancy lingo, I know what she means.
Like all agenda items, yeah, like all agenda items, the, the, the city council wants to, um, not hear an item. It's the council's prerogative, um, but you guys, can you guys? No, it's a majority vote, but it's your decision.
Okay, I'm just making sure we understand.
And I have, we can discuss it.
Okay, so a majority vote to dismiss it, we'll call it, or dispense it, is, is totally okay? And a, a majority vote does it, right?
Right.
Okay, so you don't even want to have the conversation because you think it's a waste of time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so I've got a motion from, um, Councilmember Raymond and a second from Councilmember Davis. This time, um, I'd like to discuss this motion on the floor. So, the motion is to dispense this, I do not want to dismiss this, Mayor Purton Kellum, do you want to dispense this? Councilmember Willis, uh, or, uh, Councilmember Willis, do you want to dispense this? I understand, I'll, we'll, we'll give everyone a chance to speak first. We got a motion and a second, we're now under discussion.
I, I think we need to demolish the building in order to move forward, because, uh, as I proposed earlier about the, uh. Uh, exfiltration system, it would require that, it solves the flooding, helps solve the flooding issue that's. Been at the forefront, it helps more people. And I think we should dispense with it.
You think that we should dispense of this item and not discuss it anymore?
With the demolishing of the building?
No, I'm not saying we don't demolish the building, I'm saying, can we have a workshop to talk about the promenade before we demolish the building?
I think there should be, I don't have an issue with the workshop, it can be after we demolish the building, because there is no purpose first. But I have a quick question, I would like to ask our city attorney, are there any risk exposures or anything? By moving forward and not demolishing the building? Because your, your, your suggestion that you, are you gonna suggest that you do not want to demolish the building, or are you in agreement?
I think you know exactly how I feel about this whole project, however, I am pro to conduct, I accept. The three to two vote that this project was acquired, so I'm not trying to reverse that decision. But I am fully in support of letting the citizens get involved in this process. And I don't want to debate whether we should demolish it or not, but I would like to hear the ideas from the community. One of the citizens, I believe, is here tonight, um, Stuart Smith, who, who we, I think many of us received an email. He's one example of many, Councilmember Willis had an idea, uh, to change, and I think that when we tap into this community at large. That's an opportunity, and for the record, if this community wants to demolish this building. And you know that this community wants to demolish this building, what are you concerned of? I will zip it forever if that happens, if we show up and citizens are in here. But I think we will have ideas, no matter what, let's demolish the building, let's move forward, I'm not scared of demolishing.
Okay, then I think the workshop should be after the demolition, there's no rea, I mean, I have no problem having input from the community. As far as what we want to do on, with this land and with this hub, and especially when we have a multipurpose, we all agree that drainage is a high priority. And especially when we have a multipurpose, we all agree that drainage is a high priority. We can be beneficial, if you look at the revisioning, they want community property, you know, community areas to bring their family. They want green space and we can help with the drainage. I don't have an issue with the workshop, I think the workshop and the input of the people would be great as far as what we need to build on this property. But I see no reason it needs to be done before the demolition. It can be done afterwards, and I think the city has already talked about getting the community involved in that. So I don't see the, the necessity to do it prior to the demolition. That is just making, um, this whole issue of the promenade more, it, it's, it's, it's not an issue anymore. I mean, the building's going to be demolished, we're building a hub, we can help with the drainage now. So, um, I just think that it's reopening a wound that doesn't need to be opened. And if we want a workshop afterwards, I'll be more than happy to have a workshop with the, the community input.
I just want to say, but the debate though was to spend nine, one point three million, it was, that, that's over, that money spent. And so this is not the significant emotional decision. That, that property is now in possession of the city. So I'm not, I'm not thinking that it's going to send us back through a, another process.
So what is?
We, we've done in the past in twenty seventeen with the multi-generational facility was that we, through heavy requests, had a staff update, the closest thing to a workshop. After the design was done, which is what I've heard is the proposal here is we'll do a design and then you get to pick A, B, or C out of these three designs. And that, that did not go over well in the community because they, they had other ideas and I am encouraging this council to not be afraid of involving the citizens in the process earlier. When you basically say, we don't want you, we're going to acquire the property without you. We don't want you, we're going to demolish the property without you. We don't want you to decide on what kind of designs we want, but here, pick A, B, or C.
Well, excuse me, I.
B or C, and they go, I'm not picking any of them. I wanted to be involved in the process earlier.
I have talked to quite a few people on this and I have found numerous people that want this project. You know, you're speaking of people and you're directing yourself to people that do not want it. There are lots of people that do want this. So we do have to listen to everybody and not just one side. If there's no issue with the building, what is the rush to have it before it's demolished? We've agreed, we'll do a workshop, we've agreed, we want to listen to the community, we agree, want, we want their input. Why before the demolish of the building? I'm not afraid of that, I, I just want to know what, what's the rush? Why can't it be after?
Because you asked me, it was about demolishing, and I said, I am more interested in hearing what the citizens have to say. My opinion, we should not demolish the building with the information I know today. That's my opinion.
But if, if council votes.
Do you know people that do not want this project? Or do, do you know people that do not want to demolish the building?
I know both sides.
Exactly, so do I. And so I'm, when I, when I do a, a, a workshop, that door welcomes every citizen of all walks, of all beliefs, and I respect every opinion. But workshops are easy when you've got ninety percent of the decision done and you go, you get to pick red, yellow, or blue. They're difficult when they really challenge you and they go, hey, what if we did half promenade on this side? And you kept some of the building? Or you, you, you build a new building, or you build a bigger promenade, or you don't do the promenade? Why are we scared of that?
May I?
And if the silent majority, which we've heard in the past, exists, please, this is the opportunity to have them speak up. And if they don't want to do it at a workshop, I am all for a survey. Anonymous survey, if they want. This is not.
Can we call the question, please?
This does not look good in the community and I, and, and so I'm done. I get very discouraged when this council does not want to hold a workshop.
I did not say I wouldn't hold a workshop, I said it did not need to be before demolition.
I wanted it before we bought the property, we didn't get that.
We're, we're going, we're going to give an opportunity to residents to speak. We said at the, at the, um, what, what we talked about the revisioning workshops. We also talked, we also said at the strategy meeting that we would talk about.
Let me ask you this, is there any amount of citizens that could come in here and change their mind on demolishing that building?
Absolutely not, we've already moved forward on this. We need to move forward, we've already directed the staff, excuse me, he's already got bids on the demolishing. We've already, no, wait, there's something else to be said. We've already replaced two businesses. And that needs to be done, we're moving forward with this project. We have a three-two, we know your opinion about it. However, it is time to put this baby to bed.
There's no amount of citizens that could change their mind.
We, this is correct, absolutely correct.
Council member Willis.
I have, I have some questions, I have, I have some questions.
I will go another step forward if y'all's minds are already made up.
Then I put that we have a motion and it's second on the table, so I, but I say we take a vote, we'd like to call the question, please.
You've already, you've already got the motion we were discussing, council member Willis, yes, please.
I, I would like to ask, um, Anthony, do we have any loan issues, legal issues? Because we evicted two residents, if we allow somebody else to go in there? For whatever reasons, are we?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I can answer that question, I don't know if it's an issue tonight, but um, there are, are, obviously there are some restrictions in the loan because it is a tax exempt loan and I think we went through some of that in prior discussions. It can't be used, um, a building can't be used substantially to, to be leased um, to other, other entities because there's a potent, there's likelihood that you would lose the tax exempt status of the, of the, of the bond council question, but I'm, I'm pretty confident that was the advice that we were given. Maintaining the two tenants at the time prior to relocation did not cause, uh, the tax lawyer at bond council's office, um, a problem. But, um, significantly, like leasing it more than that? Or maybe leasing it anew could potentially cause some tax issues that we would have to have bond council examine, so there is, there are loan issues. Is the answer to your specific question.
Well, I think by delaying that, I would be for workshops after the fact with the demolition. Because I still think that we need to move forward on the, uh, stormwater issue with it.
We're coming up with our ideas and if they, they verify that, council member Willis, I'm all for it. And I read the facilities plan and they recommended some different projects the last time I checked. You might have the, the golden ticket. And if that's it, we need to do it. And I think that's what needs to be brought to a workshop is that folks, best thing we can do is get rid of this building because we're going to sink three acres of, uh, a hundred million gallons of stormwater retention. I'll cheerlead that till the end.
And then the workshop, if you said that right off, I don't, I think people would be for it. But why can't we give the people, I mean, we're not in a hurry to demolish the building. It's not going to happen next week. And why can't we have a workshop? We've had a great turnout for the revisioning, the, uh, presidential street thing. This would just be a workshop and, and like, uh, Mayor Morrison said, instead of having A, B, or C to pick up, pick out from down the road after the building is demolished, we get an input of what people want. And then they, and then the staff takes that input and makes the choices of A, B, or C. But sometimes, and it happens a lot, is we get to that point and you, you have one of three choices that you don't like any of. Because you didn't have input on it. So my, you know, it's not about trying not to demolish the building. And if the people know that this is going to help you all with the stormwater and this is going to fix our problem. I'm sure they're all before it, we're not trying to not demolish the building. We're just trying to get input from the people. We're not in a rush to demolish the building, we have time to have workshop. What's the difference? What, I mean, why, no, right away.
The difference is that it's confusing. It's confusing. It's very confusing because we do have differing opinions. We've already talked about this sixteen times. And I think that to bring it up again and again on nauseam is just too much. And I think that it's better this way, that's why I made the motion that we dispense of this discussion at this time, a workshop, I'm in favor of a workshop after the demol, demolishing it. And I think that's the way it should go. So I, I wanted to call the question, um, ask mayor to call this question again, thank you.
Yes, he's been here all night, please let him speak.
If, if you're willing. Thank you.
What I'd say for this part of the show? I know your passions are strong. Um, my intent actually was not to get involved in the building, I saw the building as an opportunity. My intent, uh, let me introduce myself too for those of you who don't know me. My name is Stu Smith, I'm the chief executive officer of the Florida Association of Veteran-owned Businesses. So thank you very much for your time. My intent was not to get so involved in the building itself, but the building was an opportunity. I'm really here to talk about economic development. If, if the building decision is done and it's the will of the citizens and the council, then so be it. Um, I'll let you hash that out. Mr. Dickey and I, thank you very much, sir, and, and your staff. I've been trying to think about Cape Canaveral as an economic engine and the importance of us thinking strategically, especially because we have this envisioning process coming up about what we could be as a community. And the fact that we are just, we're right here, right? We are the gateway to the beaches and we're also the gateway to the space center. There's no more appropriate term as the space between about this city. And I don't think we're leveraging our physical position or the opportunity that we have to be an economic engineer. And I'm here to let you know that I would be, as a citizen, be happy to be involved in that. And so if it's more appropriate for me to position my idea at the March thirtieth planning meeting, I plan to be here for the March thirtieth planning meeting. So again, I appreciate, uh, uh, Mayor Morrison, your willingness to let me speak. But, um, again, my idea, just, just so you know, was to use that building as the, as the place where you launch a business in Cape Canaveral. If it was an appropriate thing to do with that building is to maybe help Mr. Dickey and his economic development issue, um, um, opportunities to position things in there. I've gone as far as to talk to people like SCORE and the SBA. And they're, they would be willing to rotate into this city to help citizens understand how to start a business here. I've talked to Groundswell, Jaren Eisenberg down in South Melbourne, um, who's an incubator. And they would be willing to rotate up here. Uh, Florida Association of Veteran-owned Businesses would be willing to have a presence here in economic development. And I've even gone the far as, uh, finding, uh, members that want an opportunity to have a rented office space here in the city somewhere, so they could talk to the space center. Because they're traveling from other points and they don't have an office close. And so I know that Tim Farrell with Veterans for You said, hey, Stu, yeah, if I had a place where I could rent office space in the city Cape Canaveral, I would talk to the space center. So if it's more appropriate for me to position this at the, uh, the March thirtieth, uh, event, I'm more than happy to do that. So thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have, I have, I have an idea for you. Uh, what about right across from the veterans park that we're spending a half a million dollars on? Uh, the union, the union hall is for sale. And I think that would be an ideal place for your project. An ideal place. And I think that would be a wonderful thing because then it could have connectivity with the veterans park.
Wherever we could.
It's right, it's right.
Figure that out, I'm willing to, and I, I told Mr. Dickey, I'm, I know that the, the, the committee that, or the group that he was running, that the, uh, Business and Economic Development Board was really impacted by COVID and, and the fact that he's a one-person show, right? And so I told him, hell, I'll volunteer, right? I'll come and interview with you guys and, and chair that committee if you want me to. I'm, I'm willing as a citizen to make things happen from a economic development standpoint. If it means another location, I'm not married to that building.
There, there are other locations that are empty also.
All right. So I'll be back on the thirtieth unless you have other questions.
Thank you very much, yes, we, 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 we will promote it.
All right, and thanks for the opportunity. All right, and Mickey, thanks for moving me up one spot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stu.
Thank you, Stu.
Mr. Dickey, did you sign him up for what he's volunteering for?
Eric, you'll get a second.
Okay.
So, yeah, and I think Stu had, had brought up that idea about the building. And I'm like, I love it, my wife even said, what about economic development? And, and using it as a, we don't have a shared workspace, we have so many people in this community that work from home. You know what, to be able to go and to use a conference room on the top floor, put in whatever the concerns are, it's just a discussion, it's an idea. And people go, I don't care if you build a promenade, but I was heard. My idea was heard in the city. And today, we are going to move forward and say, you weren't heard. And that's what I, I don't see a change. When I first got on in seventeen, this is, this was, what we're doing is status quo. The people wanted to change. And they were tired of the way the city, not, I've never been against these projects, I've been against the process. Here we are again, I didn't even bring up the three other ideas that I've been heard in, one of them is to actually demo the building. It is a promenade, and I'm like, there's brilliant people in this community, we're fools if we don't tap into it. It's some capacity, yes, before the demolition, because the idea of keeping the building for economic development is a very good idea in my one opinion. And so I couldn't even get that far. I'm like, I was thinking about tonight's meeting, I'm like, am I going to go in and start talking about my ideas? And I go, no, I just want to see, are they even open to a workshop? And I'm shocked because you aren't even open to having the conversation. You wanted to dismiss this. That, I, I don't ask for much up here. And I'm asking, pleading, I will zip it to please involve the citizens. City manager, you told me you appreciate unity. I am up here talking my heart out to all of you and to say, let's work together and say, you know what, we're not going to do it this way anymore. Wes, I'll roll the dice with you, let's go. I'm not going to come in here and, and badmouth any idea and try to be one-sided and shift the bias. I like good balanced opinions. I've got neighbors who think it's a good idea, I got neighbors who don't, I got people, it's not about that. It's about knowing, seventy percent of the people could say, do not demolish it, you make that economic development engine. And I know that we live in a republic where we still might want to demolish it. I'm not all about direct democracy on these things. I think that we do have to factor everything. And so I just, I'm pleading to this council that if this public, who I stay immensely emotionally engaged in to the best of my ability, is very concerned about how we make decisions in this city. I brought up an ordinance that said three criteria. One, workshop. Two, set a threshold on how much money you can spend. And three, determine whether they're essential or non-essential projects. And then the, the citizens love that, we all talked about it here, they said, hey, we don't want to set thresholds yet, we don't really know what's non-essential. But we like the workshop idea. And that was probably the best I've ever felt in a meeting and I, and I got one out of three through, one out of three, I got a workshop. And so today I came in with some optimism that we would get a workshop. And I've heard it, and so, excuse me for talking on, I put a lot of passion into this and I don't think I'm asking for much. Very disappointed.
I see. I, I, and I, I may get in trouble for saying this, but I'm going to be honest, because you want to know why we, we feel this way. We are not against, or I should speak for myself, I am not against a workshop. And to be honest, since I've been on this council, this council voted prior to me getting on this council to purchase this building to do a promenade. Since I've been on this council, we have voted, we have discussed. And you want to know, I wonder each, each month, what is going to be brought up to do away with this purchase of this building? This purchase of the promenade that I feel very strongly about. this purchase of the promenade that I feel very strongly about and I think would be great for the community. So I want to know why I would want to shut it down? Because I'm waiting for the next thing to come to try to stop this process from going forward.
I appreciate your.
And, and I, I mean, and I mean it respectfully, that I'm, you know, you wanted to know, I'm going to say respectfully. I want the citizens' input. I don't have an issue, but at this point, this is what this council decided to do. I think the people should be involved, but I think the workshops can wait until after. And then we can have a report on whether we can do anything with the drainage issue. And then that will make a deciding factor of what we can do with the property and what we can't do with the property. But I mean, until that point, you know, we, we can get the input, but until we know where we stand for the drainage, which I think is a great idea and will help the city tremendously. You know, I, I don't mean, I think there's a discussion for it. This, this council has voted and this is what it's been decided. So we need to move forward and let the community build the best civic hub there is with their input.
It was a three, two vote. If it was five oh, your point would be very strong. It was a, if there's ever time to do a workshop, it's on a three, two.
Well, I don't want to argue with you. My intentions are not to argue with you at all, you know, I'm going to be disrespectful. But it is a vote. We are voting today to not do that. I mean, it looks like we have a three, two again. So that's, that's where I think, I think this, this promenade is going to be great. This hub is going to be great for the city. And, you know, so that's, you want to, we're at, that's, I'm just waiting for the next thing to drop, to try to stop.
But we're not stopping the project, so go tell the community that you think this project's going to be great at a workshop. That's like.
After the demolition, sure.
Yeah.
So why, I don't understand why.
When is the demolition scheduled to be?
This is.
This will help.
But didn't, didn't we vote three, two to demolish the building when we approved the original one?
Yeah. And we did not vote to dig that parking lot and sink a stormwater drain.
But we did vote.
We're going to stay purist to the vote? Why are we talking about putting stormwater drains underneath the parking lot? The vote was three, two to build it as is.
Because I'm trying, I'm trying to solve a problem with flooding for the citizens, the majority of the ones.
Trying to solve a problem with our process, a bad one.
And I'm all for workshops on what to build or do on the promenade. But I think we've already voted to have that building demolished.
And you can, and you have the power to change the process at any point.
Can we take the votes since it's on and it's in second?
There's nothing wrong with you saying, yeah, I voted, but I want, we didn't vote on a date the demolition be. Actually, if we want to talk about what we voted for, the vote was to spend $800,000 in 21, 22 this year. We did that, 925, actually 1.3. The remaining project was in 22, 23. And so this was an intermediate goal and this got done faster than every other goal.
You have to go with opportunity.
The demolish to buy it. That was a good argument. I get that, like, but now what's the rush?
No, that, what, what, I think you misunderstood that our city staff has already been directed. Todd Morley has already received bids for the demolishing. It's confusing, well, I do, because if, wait a minute though. But our, it's confusing for our staff to direct our staff to do things and then say, oh, no, we don't want that. No, we can't be like that. This is wrong. This is not what we're supposed to do in our code of conduct. Once the vote is taken, no, but we do need, we do need to take care of this. That once, once a vote is taken and we're going to move forward, we don't have to keep bringing it up over and over and over again. Like Kim tried to explain to you. So I said, let's dispense this, which it doesn't, didn't get us anywhere. And I'd like to call the question. Thank you. I have, there's a motion on the floor. We have a second. I'd like to call the question at this point. Thank you.
It's just a discussion item. So that, we can, I just want to know the demo date, please.
I gave a motion to dispense this.
There is no set demo date. We're still in the process of receiving bids.
Did the bid specify a timeframe on when we wanted to complete this?
Dave, do you know, do you recall? Did the demo bid specs specify a timeframe for the demolition? Okay. But the bid specs themselves didn't specify a timeframe.
Okay. I don't think there's anything else to discuss on this one. Anything else?
We're not voting on anything.
No, there's, there's no reason to vote on it. Okay. Yep. I won't waste the time with the motion. It's, it's. Speaking of 10 o'clock, I move that we have a council meeting two weeks from this date or as soon as possible, we go to two meetings a month.
That's not even on the agenda.
Okay, I, I can.
That's not even on the agenda. And so let's not try to add things on this agenda. Let's try not to add things onto this agenda at this point, point of order.
We'd already be done with the vote if you don't want to do it. There's no point of order in calling a scheduled vote. I'll bring it up at reports if it pleases you. The last thing is that procedurally to, to, to say that at that point, I don't think was inappropriate, but I would like to dissolve and, and, and we can do that during the reports. I just think that's a bit untasteful. So I, I think we are on the short-term rental policy execution along with the city of Cape Canaveral. This is a real issue in the city. I had a chance to talk with our city manager and our community development director. We wrote policies. We had intents for these policies. We signed a contract or gave the authority to sign the contract. The biggest issues with short-term rentals that I heard was they were violating the seven-day minimum. That people were not noise, parking issues, trash, disrespecting, revolving door, a hotel in the neighborhood or some of the things that we heard. I think this council has tried our best to keep this in front of us by keeping information. We heard some concerns from ProChamps that they're going to get the kinks worked out. I've tried to make it abundantly clear that we are willing to build the airplane as we're flying it, kind of. We are one of the first cities to really work through this. However, it was brought to my attention that when you look at what our city website says, what the ProChamps website says, it says vacation rentals in the city of Cape Canaveral must have a business tax receipt with the city, with the county. It must have, obviously, Department of Business and Professional Regulations license. And procedurally, I think the opportunity is, and my question to this council is, and certainly the staff is, do we need to do anything differently in our policy to make sure that these things are being done? Because the spreadsheet, which I did not attach by error, and I referenced it in here, excuse me, I will send that spreadsheet. It's a simple spreadsheet. It was sent to me by our code enforcement, senior code enforcement officer, or Dave Dickey. It's basically all of the registered ProChamps businesses. And then some columns were added. And the, the big takeaway and summarized in here was that there's a large amount of them that do not have business tax receipts from the city and the county and the state. And so those summaries, I think is, is this a policy area that we need to improve on? Do we need to make a change? Do we need to make a budget change and give our staff the resources that they need? Is this, because I can relate to this. Sometimes you write stuff down on paper and then when you go into practice, you're like, this is taking way longer than I thought. This isn't working, whatever we need to do. Or it's just saying, give me two weeks, it'll, or two months, it'll be fixed. Dave, you and I had a great conversation. I appreciated your time. I don't know if you're ready for, for an update or.
Yeah, Mayor. Yes, after you talked to me on Friday about and explained all your concerns, I tasked Dave with finding out what is happening with BTRs and with DBPR licenses. So Dave, what did you find out?
Yeah. ProChamps, as, as, as I talked to the mayor last week.
Sorry, Dave, to interrupt you. It is 10 o'clock. We have a point of order here about the extension of.
Thank you very much. We need a motion for 15 minutes, I would think.
Can't we just get it done in five minutes?
Dave, how long do you need?
Easier to get it done in five.
Five minutes is enough?
I'll make a motion with 15 minutes.
15. Last second.
Motion to extend to 10:15 in a second. Motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Mayor Purcellum to extend to 10:15. City Clerk, would you please call it?
Mayor Purcellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Against.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Thank you, Mayor. Dave, you want to continue?
Yeah. Let me just begin by saying, I appreciate the mayor bringing these issues to our attention. It really is only, because we don't hear everything in, in City Hall. I know that you as council members here probably hear a lot more from the residents out on the street regarding some of these policies and how they're implemented or how they're not implemented. So I, I do appreciate the comments that I do hear from the mayor and from all the council members, frankly, on, on, on any issue, to include this one. So, yes, based on Todd's direction, we did go back and review, there's several important documents. First is our ordinance that this council approved last year, it could have been 20, 20.
Last year, effective October 1st.
Yes. And that's set out, established the requirements for registration, what specifically has to be included in the registration process. The other document set that's important is the actual agreement that we have between the city and ProChamps. That sets out the expectations of what we have and what we expect ProChamps to be delivering. And I reviewed that and there is, I'll, I'll say it's very consistent between the two, which is a good thing. That's, that's what we expected and I'm sure that's, that's specifically what we wanted. As we were preparing the agreement, we went back and made sure all of those requirements of the ordinance was checked off. So I can say that that's, that's a good thing. There are some issues remaining. The mayor's brought up a few of them. And specifically, the ones that jump out related to what we're discussing this evening are the, there's three items I think the mayor brought up. One is the city BTR process. The other is the county BTR process. And the third one is a Florida DBBR requirement. Those are all requirements. Actually, the city BTR and the, and the DBBR are requirements of the ordinance. The ordinance doesn't specifically address county BTR requirements. However, this is something I learned that we need to fix in our processes. Again, as a result of the mayor bringing this to our attention. We've, I've had a conversation with our BTR clerk and not, no excuses, but the responsibility for implementation of this ordinance is kind of spread across departments. And that's created a little bit of a wrinkle, but we will work through that. We're in the, we're in the process of doing that. The issue is our BTR clerk is responsible for implementing the city BTR requirements. She administers that. She does a fantastic job. We're fortunate. What's been happening up to this point has been that the county BTR requirement requires that as part of their application, they have to submit a city BTR. That's required by the county. So it's kind of which comes first, the county or the city? Well, in this case, the county's requiring the city. So we're actually having to go first. So the, and the, the challenge then becomes, how do we make sure that the county, that the applicant leaves our door and truly goes out and gets county BTR? Where, where's the follow-up? Where's the follow-through? How do we close that loop? And that is something that we are, we are working on. I, I'm going to be setting up a discussion point with the county BTR folks and our BTR people to close that loop. And the, the other important requirement in the ordinance is we want to make sure that the county tourism development tax issues are, monies are being paid. Well, the county BTR process ensures that happens. I had a conversation with the county BTR folks this, today as a matter of fact. And that is part of their BTR process is to cross-reference these applications to make sure that the county tourism tax is being paid. So I think when we, when we get to a point where we are verifying county BTRs are being addressed and dealt with and received by these applicants, that'll check off both of those boxes. County BTR as well as county tourism taxes, because that's, that's part of their process. So I guess my rambling, what I'm saying is, there's still a loop that's not being completed in our process, and that is the county BTR process. So we're, we're in the process of closing that.
Thank you very much. City manager, did you have anything else on that part from Dave's response? Do you want to add anything or?
No, I don't have anything.
He explained the, the loops and the challenge and how he's going to try to close the loop.
I think your analogy about.
It was loopy.
Yes, it is.
Building while flying, I think we're still experiencing.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Very much so. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, that's a good, great question. And that's a question I'm going to ask when we have our sit-down with the county folks. Because right now, as I said, once they leave our door, they're, our, our, our city BTR clerk specifically lets them know that they have an obligation to get a county BTR, so that they're aware of it. Now, the problem is the follow-up and follow-through to make sure they're actually doing that. And, and, you know, and, yeah, and the, the, what we can start doing is, these guys are coming in for renewals at the end, every year. As part of our renewal process, we can require them to show evidence that they have a county BTR. That'll be part of our renewal process, but that's, still that problem remains in that first year before they renew that, that, that first time. We need to make sure that we're, that we're addressing that first year. That's another conversation I'm going to have. That's a great, another great question is, where, where is it specifically? Is, is that just an administrative policy that they have? Is it in an ordinance? What exactly?
Well, does the, to Councilmember Davis's point, does the county require the city? Did they require to show the cities first?
Yes.
Oh.
The county is requiring, they want to see the city BTR before they'll issue the county.
Well, I like their idea on 10 days or like three days after that you have to upload it or email it or it terminates or something. I don't know.
Right. We could have BCA create some type of tickler file at, at the end of whatever, whatever time period.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Does registration with ProChamps require them to enter the BTRs?
It, I'm going to, it's a kind of a twofold response I'm going to give you. It is, it is required. However, the second problem that we're, we're just finding out is that folks can work around the process with BCA current, BSNA currently, and they can go forward with their registration without providing the city BTR information. There's, there's a field that they're required to fill out, but I don't know if you've noticed this, Mayor, but if you look at the, the spreadsheet that shows all the different registrations, you should see all the crazy stuff that's put in that field. Some of them, I'd say maybe 60% of them are putting in the correct BTR reference, but there's all kinds of other stuff that people are just putting in. They're putting in something in the field and that's allowing them to move forward. So we're having a conversation with BSNA right now.
So it's equality control.
Yeah.
Right? Like that, there's not a set of eyes.
Correct.
So, so if those fields are formatted, then it's just a matter of anybody that doesn't fit the proper format gets kicked out and say, and they're in violation.
Say that again.
That could be.
Well, that field would have a certain format to it. And if it, if it doesn't match that format, if it's just gobbledegoo coming out of it, then it should be kicking out that registration for scrutiny or.
Like a smart form.
Or a fine, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Agreed.
I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't that put the onus on pro champs to be sure that people are getting what they need to do?
Well, yes, it it would put the onus as well on the applicant because they would be required to fill in that proper. Data field and if they don't, it doesn't move forward at that point. We're just kinda firing in here. It, it's totally following me is. Payment. They fill out the form. Where, follow the money. Where does it go? If I pay online, does it go to pro champs first? And then they, and then they pay us the fifty percent and within a thirty days, I think. That's correct. That's correct. That might be, cause money is a great mechanism to say. Maybe amending the contract, they flow to the city first. And then we're, you know, you have to prove that you did that quality control or whatever they need. Before you get paid. Now, might be an awful idea, but just. You're working on it. I'm happy that, I'm just trying to throw some ideas. No, it's a good idea.
Well, if there's any way to balance that, like a spreadsheet or, you know. Uh, accounting. The money in, in this number of uh actual registrations that are complete and correct.
See, yeah, I I don't wanna get too, too into the weeds, but. The, once, once that payment is made to pro champs, to a degree, they lose the incentive to further. Twist arms and enforce this. That's the root problem and my, and and there's no incentive for the seven-day minimum. But they're responsible to enforce it. And so we, and we had a chat. So, I mean, we're working it, we're evolving. But, yeah, if you had a spreadsheet that could balance, that would say. You know, the centralized tool document that.
Well, the database should be automated to the point where they. Can do that. If it's not entered correctly, if it's not the right number of characters or series of characters, it kicks it out. And you don't go any further.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which means they don't get paid.
Right. Right. That'll uh, that'll improve quality quickly. Or you go out of business. It's just the way it works. That's the, I mean, it sounds like they're able to just go, oh, yeah, looks good. I don't mean it's malicious or an ill will, but it's like. Quality is not. There's not, there're not, there's no incentive. To to do us beyond a certain level of. This conversation would be one, I would think, like, I wouldn't want the council talking about my. Issues, so I think um. You've got a good handle on it. I just wanted to say, if you need. Like, if it's resources for people, manpower, because I know it could be taken longer than you expected. Maybe that's not it. You might work through these kinks and, or obviously policy. I know you had talked about the county doesn't require. If we need to add that, we're game because, yeah, this is a spirited issue in the city that. It keeps coming and their points are valid and I just wanna represent them. And I, I would like to mention one thing, mayor. Last week, for the first time. Since October first, we received a list of a hundred and forty properties that they have provided. Documentation. That we can move forward with um NOV, notice of violations on our seven-day minimums. Our, our senior code enforcement officer has gone through those in, in a couple of days. It's priority for him. He's weeded out the ones that are either duplicates or um are not in violation for one reason or another. So we've, we've come up with a list of a hundred and four properties. And our code enforcement officers are gonna start going through and we're going to be processing those. Um, through our notice of violation. So you're going to start seeing some cases going to our special magistrate. To enforce our seven-day minimum, so.
A- as you know, I meet monthly with code enforcement staff to review all, all items with code enforcement. And this is something that I regularly bring up with Dave and Brian. We have a standing offer from this council for more resources on this issue if we need it. And to date, the response is, we still don't know, we still don't know. We're, we're, we're getting this information. We're gonna start working with it. So as soon as I hear from my staff that. We're overwhelmed or we need X or Y or Z, I'm gonna be coming to the council about that. So I'm very attuned to that.
You're trying to iron out the process. And 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 I get that. I did bullet some things in there. The reporting, I greatly appreciate that's been coming out from them and that is an excellent tool. For citizens and so I just put some uh, a list of the items that I think as these. There's five hundred uh that are identified, that are registered. And then as this goes and goes, hey, a hundred four have noticed a violation. That would be a great um resource that maybe I don't have to request, but if you're working on that, we can start. Working towards um. It to ensure that this is improving.
And mayor, we are at ten fifteen.
Yeah, yeah, and and we'll, we'll be able to start populating some of those bullets that you mentioned in your, in your uh agenda cover, mayor, too. Uh, to this point, we haven't been able to, so. Thank you. Okay, it's ten sixteen unless we're gonna extend, we're gonna adjourn. Do you wanna extend? Anyone? Anything that's pressing? Meeting adjourned.